Okay. Alright, very cool. Oh, okay.
Hey Jacob.
Hey, she, how you doing?
It was really nice. Also, I had the wrong meeting. I'm in the right place.
What was it? It was like graduation or something. I think last year, school year. And I walked in and it was only me. It was, oh, was there a table break or something? I wasn't, I'd never got the email. And I walked in and it was a full auditorium and it was only me. And like, when I walked in, I was waving and I'm like, whoa.
What's going on?
Dang, I just took mine off. I left mine off. All three of them.
Dick, how are you? You good?
My shutters are done.
City manager?
How you doing?
Commissioner?
Vice Mayor? How you doing, man?
Doing well yourself?
Good to see ya.
It's going great.
Hi, how you doing? It's good to see ya.
On the west end of the dais here.
Right here?
I know. This is the side you want to be. You'll be, you'll be over here. See, we don't have an election next year, right? No. So you'll be over, when I'm done, you'll move over here. Susan C. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't like. This is my preferred, this is your, you got, you got Mark.
Is this your other side?
I don't have a good side. I, I, I don't, but.
I like being close to them. You like being close to them? You know what, this is like.
What? It's lighter.
Lighter?
Yes.
Well, in my case, in my case, we have both ends covered.
No, I like Kevin David next to me.
We get, we get both ends covered here.
Yeah, I know it. I remember when you sat there. I had bruises on.
Brad? Nice to see ya. You guys get a date?
Well, you know, we had some damage with the hurricane because the balcony fell on top of our roof. And then, you know, rain was coming in and so we had to. Get that fixed and make sure we don't have any mold in our new drywalls, so. Yeah, so, and then we had some hiring to do and spiring to do. Always interesting. Things have changed a little up there. I don't think I have a pen.
After the pledge of allegiance?
I'm sure I have one in my purse somewhere.
Saying we're gonna move, we're gonna move this up before public comments. We're gonna move that, we're gonna move the presentation number two. We're gonna move that up and then we'll resume the meeting.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware we had this whole thing happen tonight.
Let's do this first. You're gonna do this first. You'll bring two forward first and then you go to public in the rest of the meeting.
Again. Hope not till midnight this time.
Are you doing? I'm in bed when you, when y'all, y'all are out the bars.
I've put my pen over here. A little unnerved.
Challenge him, I told you.
You told him to do that.
Yeah. Okay, ready to start, guys.
It's killing me, I'm not easy. And then I hit her like, use passion.
I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August 1st, 2017. And the time is 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kika?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melody Kidd.
There he is.
I'm not Melody.
Okay. Reverend Smith, I didn't realize we did a change. Thank you. And if you please stand and remain standing for the legion. Pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for this opportunity. We thank you for our city leaders. We ask your blessings upon them. We thank you for the city workers and all the first responders and that you would be with them tonight. We pause to remember those that are affected by the happenings in Las Vegas and we pray that you will just grant your grace and your mercy to them. And we thank you tonight for the children of the community. We pray that you would bless them and all they do as they are our future of Tarpon Springs. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. We'd like to move item number two next so we can have the presentation. Item number two is Peace for Tarpon Coloring Contest. Ms. Robin Singer.
It'll be alright. It's good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Alahuzis, and good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Attorney, Chief, at all. Nice to be with you this evening. And a special welcome to the artists and parents and family and friends who participated in the Magical Mangroves Coloring Contest, which was a collaboration between the City of Tarpon Springs and Peace for Tarpon. Most of the students who participated were part of after-school programs. Some of them were from Tarpon Elementary. So I'd like to recognize as many people as I can who, as my memory will have stuck in there. So I'll do, do my best. But before we begin, I'd like to give a special shout out to our marketing committee who devised this event and came up with this brilliant idea that I think everyone has just fallen in love with. So if you are on the Tarpon Springs Marketing Committee, would you please stand? Awesome. Thank you. And it's just a great, great team. And a special shout out to Chris Gregg. And Chris, you have to stand up again. Chris Gregg is a fine artist here in town who actually did the design. She did the drawing and the design and also for the city resilient community. Mangrove is Chris's creation that she gifted to us for us all to use. So we especially appreciate her this evening. If there are any representation here from Boys and Girls Club, the Shepherd Center, Cops and Kids, the after-school programs, Tarpon Elementary. If you'd like to stand too, because y'all were a very important part in this as well. There's Fred Howard from the Shepherd Center, the Boys and Girls Club, Cops and Kids. Thank you. And I'd also like to recognize the Museum Director of the Lippa Ratner Museum of Art, Ann Larson, if you would stand. Thank you. And Ann was one of the judges, along with Mayor Alahuzis and Christopher Still. The three of them had quite a time figuring out of the over 150 entries who received the awards. So as you know, everyone who's here today is a winner and we really appreciate your art and what you've done. So if we're ready, are we ready?
We're ready.
We ready?
Yes.
Alright. We're gonna ask the commission to go to the front here and the other side of City Clerk Irene Jacobs. And as I make, they'll make their way to the front. And Commissioner Kika? You have, there's a box there, so you've got that? Okay, very good. So when I call the name, you'll make your way to the front and Irene Jacobs will, the mayor will present you with your award. And then Wendy Sedleczek, who's here with Peace for Tarpon, will give you your prize. And we'll go from there. As you notice, some of them are bigger than others. This one desk here on the floor, you might want to wait till, till we're done and move it out. But here we go. So we'll start with the four to six-year-old winners. And we'll start with the honorable mentions. I'm proud to announce honorable mention, Akatelia Rivera. Is she here this evening? Rivera? If you come up here, you've received an honorable mention. And if you go down to the lady at the end in the flowery dress and the mayor has a ribbon for you. And if you can just shake the hands of the commissioners and if y'all want to get a picture, that would be great. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. Our next honorable mention for four to six-years-old is Sherry Reinhardt. Sherry, if you make your way to the front with mom and go all the way down to the end there. And it's interesting, with the four to six-year-olds, we had one four-year-old, one five-year-old, and one six-year-old as winner. It seemed to kind of play out that way, so that was great. Oh, boy. Very good. And our next honorable mention for the four to six-year-old category is Yomalis Martinez. If you can make your way to the front. There's a lot of tall people at the front there for these little ones. And congratulations. And now for third place for four to six-year-olds, I'm honored to announce Promise Bryce. Third place. And we'll have to save her, save hers for her. For second place, Maria Abel. Maria, turn around, look at your mom and dad. Very sweet. All of the, all of the prizes are art-related. So art supplies and sketchbooks and Maria got a beautiful little desk and nice little art supplies. And our first-place winner for four to six-year-olds, I'm happy to announce, goes to Kayden Brown. And the first, the first place is iPad minis, so that's pretty exciting. At any rate, I'd also like to recognize City Manager Mark Lacouris. I see you over there. And he was very, very gracious. The city provided ribbons for us and helped us with the, with the, with the event as well as the Tarpon Springs Library. We're all amazing. Any, anyone from the library here tonight? Nope, anyway. So all, everybody was so, so supportive and wonderful. Alright, moving on to seven to nine-year-olds. And we'll go to the honorable mention category. Honorable mention, the, our first award winner is Jessica Hannum. Jessica? And next honorable for seven to nine-year-olds is it Lali Donapiraza? Excellent. Very good. And the last honorable mention for seventy-nine-year-old is Exora Boykins. Congratulations. Third place for seventy-nine-year-olds, that honor goes to Gabrielle Cross. Thank you, congratulations. Very good. And I believe Gabrielle's with the CAP, CAP Center. And I want to recognize former Mayor Archie, who's the Director of the Citizens Alliance for Progress, Neighborhood Family Center, who's at the back of the room and also a very wonderful partner. Seventy-nine-year-old, second-place winner goes to Andres Rodriguez III. Nice. Congratulations. And our first-place winner for the seven to nine-year-old category goes to Ms. Aurora Stein. Excellent. Congratulations, Aurora. And our, our last category is ten to twelve-year-olds. The first honorable award goes to Leah Barker. Leah? Great job, thank you. Our next honorable goes to Kylie Gaskon. Kylie? Very nice. And our, our next honorable for ten to twelve-year-old goes to Alexia Coolias. Awesome, thank you. Our third-place winner for ten to twelve-year-olds is Elijah Franks. Elijah? And second-place winner, Gianna. Is Gianna here this evening? All your helpers here. Congratulations, Gianna. And our first-place winner for the ten to twelve-year-olds goes to Isabella Fratello. Alright, and once again, thank you to all the parents, all the relatives who supported this, all these after-school programs. And just did a great job. It was such a pleasure to do this and I know the judges and the commission and everybody's very thrilled about this as well. So thank you so much for your participation and go out there and make some art, okay? Make, keep making your art, alright?
We are now going to take five minutes recess, but I'd like to have all the students at the lobby to take their pictures, okay? Thank you.
The fun starts later.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's gonna start later. Oh, yeah. Yeah, might as well enjoy the good, the good parts of the agenda, right? Have a good, you gonna be around?
No, I'm, you mean tonight?
Stay for the fun.
No, it's okay, I'll hear about it later. Hear about it later. I already heard little dribs and drabs, you know?
Yeah. Have a good night, Robyn.
At Lepus.
No, I told him. No, I told him I'm back in two weeks. I'm back right this morning.
Celebrating the kid, the next morning they're rolling another room.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, it's on this list.
Thank you.
I have no doubt that.
Be like back up, being at the school again with all the germs. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Didn't even see him? Oh. No, I was up. I was getting a call. I'm up at six. I got the sunlight coming. Did they keep bringing me some dinner? I'm good. I gotta poke you. What, hold you over? No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I ate every day. I liked it. Yeah, I know that is your spot.
All up there on 19, yeah.
Oh, no. Oh, no, I didn't even notice. I didn't even notice. I was in the parking lot of a lot of them once. We were in the new John Hubbard.
We are now reconvening the BOC meeting at 7:00 PM. We are now going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward to the podium. Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
Somebody left their glasses, so I don't know. They might be...
Probably Robyn.
Okay, Mike Cuscutis, 623 East Harpen Avenue. My public comment is this. You know, we just went through the Hurricane Irma, and I want to give, I want to applaud the city, the police force, the city manager. You know, a lot of people don't know that we have 50-something lift stations in the city of Tarpon Springs. Most of them were out. And to have city employees in the middle of a hurricane go and make sure that, that we had those things up and running, making sure the generators were there, getting everything moving forward. Again, a lot of people don't know. So, I want to, you know, kudos to the city and the city emergency management staff and whoever was responsible for spearheading that. So, in any event, congratulations for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes?
Good evening. Paul Lewis, 820 Bay Shore Drive. I come today to the city council and the mayor to ask for some assistance in a matter with our property. We were part of the Bay Shore Heights subdivision drainage project. And we essentially had a portion of our land so that the drainage pipe could be repaired, taken by the city, which is appropriate to do, to do the work on our project. My challenge has been, I'm trying to get my land restored to the condition that it was prior to this construction. And I'm not getting any responsiveness from the city. And I'm quite frustrated. I've been a member of the Tarpen for 15 years here, and I love living in the city. And again, I know it's been a very busy month with, but this has been going on for several months. And I'm going to briefly read a portion of a letter that I wrote. I've called, emailed, I've sent registered letters. I'm copying a letter I sent to a gentleman who works with Meritage. Apparently, this gentleman is now accusing my wife of lying in attempting to block delivery of our boat trailer. And I said, "This is false. As such, and due to the events that occurred last week, there's no goodwill left as we have been citizens, Christians entrusted in the company. I'm now turning this matter over to you, the city, to restore our property to the condition it was before the installation." And I've sent letters and pictures. The letter was never answered. And again, again, I do say, "Our property is still not in the pre-construction condition. As a citizen of Tarpon Springs for 16 years, I remain disappointed in this process. The stress this has placed upon my family. I request no further contact from Meritage or the city to my wife. I await your response, but really would appreciate a response." So, that was, again, several weeks ago, and we've all been quite busy here. And in my last letter, I said, "I still haven't heard from you. Please contact me so we can have a sit-down meeting for an hour so I can get my property back to its pre-construction condition." And as per the, and again, I have copies of this here, four, which was the original agreement, that contractors should restore surface of the property lots 23 and 24 to the pre-construction condition. I have holes on my property. I went out to take the garbage out last night. I have holes there about five to six foot deep on the side of my property. I can't get a response from the city. I'd love to have a meeting with somebody and have, again, I'd rather keep this, again, very informal. I really am not an individual to come and make a big ruckus, but I can't get a response. It's quite frustrating. And I appreciate any assistance from the city council or the mayor that I can get to have a sit-down and get my property back to its condition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Andrea Salivaras, 495 Riverside Drive. I come over here to give one recommendation to the commissioners, for the mayor and the city manager. We need, the last time we're talking about the sponge docks. This time, I think I give you another recommendation, to come to put speed pumps on the sponge docks so that way we don't have a lot of cars to running like crazy. Number two, I want to ask the city and the mayor, when you plan to open cemetery? Or one gate of cemetery, we can walk and stare with the cars? I want to ask you when? We have to see up blocks. A lot of people they're gonna go to inside to the cemetery, they cannot because all the gates are closed. Any of the city knows what happened there?
Just real fast, there's safety concerns in the cemetery and the trees. We're working as fast as possible, but we're not gonna open it up until we make sure all the broken branches on the trees and everything is safe. So, it's for safety reasons that open, and we have tree companies in working on it. And as soon as we feel it's safe, it'll be as soon as possible. Hopefully, it's coming very soon now.
Soon, maybe a month from now?
No, before that.
Thank you. Now, I want to ask you one more question. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I want to know how many commissioners was here in the time we had hurricane? Because I have rumored, Mr. Carr is not of the city at the time. I want to know if it's the truth or not.
Well...
I'm the, I think I'm a citizen. I'm the businessman. I want to know if my representative is the city of Tarpon Springs at the time we have hurricane.
First of all...
Go ahead.
Let me do it, Mayor, because, you know, a lot of people don't understand what happens during emergency management in the hurricane. Under emergency management, as you know, the city manager is the one who declares a state of emergency. At the time of emergency, myself, the police chief and fire chief are the ones running all of emergency operations. Back prior to 2005, there used to be the need of three commissioners to be available in case a vote was needed to be done. At that time, we had all the 2004 hurricanes, an ordinance was passed, and that authority was given to me. So, it is strictly the things that happened during that time is under the authority of the city manager. The one you need there to make decisions is the city manager. The commissioners are not part of the emergency management. They've never have been part of the emergency management team that runs the operations. Obviously, they're available. Every one of our commissioners were available, got briefings many times daily, and were in close proximity to need them, but they do, they are not stationed at our facility. They're not, they're not required, and they're not involved in the emergency management process. Those decisions during that time are made by the city manager.
That decision the city manager make it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here now, thank you very much. We're now going to the proclamations. Commissioner Kikta will read the proclamation, item number 1A, Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
City of Tarpon Springs Florida proclamation. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. And whereas we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. Now, therefore, I, Commissioner Susan Kikta, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this will be mailed?
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, any commission comment? No. We move into the item number 1B, which is the Community Planning Month. Commissioner Carr will read the proclamation.
Proclamation, whereas changes constant affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the planning who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Tarpon Springs. Whereas, the mayor and the commissioners extend a heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment and public service by our planning staff. Now, therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Community Planning Month. And this is going to be accepted by Heather, the Planning and Zoning Director.
Just one quick word. I just, thanks. Thank you for the recognition, recognizing planning and the Planning and Zoning Department. Really appreciate it. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, any commission comment?
I've got one. I don't know if the public knows this, but we've been short-staffed for quite some time in the Planning and Zoning Department. And Heather has gone far and beyond what was actually expected, I think, of her. And she's really an all-star to our staff. So, thank you for everything that you're doing. We've got a lot of great staff here in the city of Tarpon.
Thank you. Next item is item number 1C, the Fire Prevention Month. And I will read the proclamation, the seat of Tarpon Springs proclamation. Whereas, the seat of Tarpon Springs is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all living in and visiting the city. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are where people are at greater risk from fire. And whereas, a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. Whereas, home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. Whereas, the seat of Tarpon Springs first responded are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fires injury through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2017 Fire Prevention Week, every second counts, planned two ways out, serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it twice a year. And now, therefore, I, Chris Alahuza, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through 14, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. Chief Young will accept this. You could have kept that. That's fine. Thank you. Do you want to say if you're worth the buy? No? Okay. All right. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, any commission comment? No? Okay. Thank you. We're now moving to our special consent agenda. Number three, special events. A, Sister Series Grape Release Competition, November 4, 2017. B, is Maritime Gathering, November 5, 2017. Number four is the award file, number 180008-ANDSRS, single-source purchase of oil-controlled chemicals. Number five is the award file, 18007-ANDSRS, maintenance, support, and equipment for motorrad radios. Number six is increased file, number 170023-ANDSRS, cash equipment, single-source purchase. Number seven is renewed file, number 150018-SC-DSRS, water and wastewater supplies. Number A is cancel file, number 140098-BSRS, laboratory services. And number nine is the award file, number 180010-CSRS, library materials through state Florida contract. The number A is 55101500-17-ACS, book printing, library materials, and related services. Are there any items that you'd like to pull?
Yes, item 3B.
3B?
Maritime Gathering.
Okay.
I've brought my concern up several times, and I think a couple of other commissioners have agreed with this concern of the street being closed 10 to 12 times a year on the sponge docks for the city-sponsored events. Now, when the Merchant Association or the Chamber have events, they open up the street for all business owners and for the visitors to be on the whole street. With the city-sponsored events, it's basically in front of the sponge exchange. So, 10 to 12 times a year, the business owners on Dodecanese are hurt by not having business, their businesses approached by visitors because they're all in the area of the sponge exchange. I know the parking lots on the east end are great for people to park at, so the east businesses do get some, some business on those days. But there are over 30 businesses on the west end that, basically, the barricade stops at Hope Street, and no one goes beyond that. So, these are weekend events. If we have 12 weekends with the barricades up out of 52 weeks, that's just not good for our business owners. And especially since most of these events are during the slow time of the year when our businesses need the visitors. So, I will not vote for this item because I have brought this up before, this concern. And I, and I feel that the city events should be throughout the whole street, just like the Merchant Association and Chamber events are.
We're going to remove that from the consent agenda and have this separate. So, I need a motion for the consent agenda with the exception of 3B.
Make a motion to remove that item?
Second, I do have a question. Is this, is this related, Commissioner, to the letter from the Merchant Association, or is this separate?
Excuse me?
Is this...
Can we talk about this after we vote? Thank you. Are there any public comments on these items? No? Any other commission comments on the items on the consent agenda?
What?
We're gonna move it out. Yeah.
You're just gonna vote on the other items and then go to that one?
Yes. Okay. So, roll call. For the items except 3B.
Commissioner Kikta? Yes. Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yeah.
Oops, I'm sorry. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to item number 3B. Commissioner Seber, you want to continue?
Well, you know, it's just, it's been a concern for a number of years. And we have tried to work with the, uh, the people who organize these events with the city and, uh, as a merchants association, because the merchants association runs 17, 18 events a year. And they are inclusive of the whole street, whether it's Tarpon Avenue or Dodo Canes. They make sure that all business owners are getting, you know, visitors. And with the city events, they're basically just in front of the sponge exchange. So, that really hurts the rest of the business owners. Especially at the west end when we have 30-something businesses and the barricade is put up. Like, for this event, it'll be put up at 7 o'clock or 9 o'clock in the morning and taken down at 7 o'clock in the evening. That's a whole day of not seeing anybody on, on a weekend. So, I feel that either the city needs to work with the merchants association to maybe make these events larger or stretch them out to the whole street. Or we, we need to talk about this and not continue to do this every single time. Because I hear the complaints and, um, and as, as, as a commissioner up here, I feel like I need to say something about it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So, when we have Night in the Islands, where does that end? Because that's a, that's a city-sponsored event, correct?
Yeah.
So, all the Night in the Island events, the two Latin fests where they bring in buses of people. And, and they don't go beyond Hope Street. And for this maritime event. So, that's just closing off businesses from, from, from being able to do business during these events.
Those from Athens to Hope?
To Hope. But again, you know, when they park on the east end, at least those businesses have an opportunity to see people as they walk by. But then they stop at Hope. And, and it's been an ongoing argument with the merchants association and the city for, for many years.
So, the merchant association is to be included in the decision-making of that?
Well, you know, we did get a letter from the merchants association on this item. And, uh, either we work together to make the event bigger or the city, you know, somehow make the event bigger like the merchants association do and include the whole, the whole street.
So, Mayor, since I've been in disagreement with the merchants association for many years on this, let me tell you the other side of the story. First of all, and we go back to where this started, Night of the Islands. There was many years we begged an event like Night of the Islands to be done, and we begged for the merchants association to do it. The reason we ended up doing it is because they didn't take that on. We were able to get some grant money and we put it on. And we've done it ever since. That event is conducive to an area where we have restaurants in front of the sponge exchange. Just like this maritime event, it's a smaller event. It's a smaller event that's not conducive with blocking off. And despite what some shop owners, you all know from the different things, there's a bunch of them don't want the whole block dock, the docks blocked off when they don't go. There's a lot of people that don't want any events blocking Dodo Canes off. So, we've always said, and when we came up last year, I gave a standing order to merchants things. If you want to put a co-event, not with us, because we as a city probably shouldn't be doing Night of the Islands all the time, but we do. We put the work in it. But if the merchants want to put some kind of before activity, after activity, to bring the plan to me, we do. If we have an event that should be confined in a smaller space, because it's like the maritime for historical, you know, you know, we don't have a great budget with these events, we try to put them on. It's conducive to do it. Plus, it's conducive with the traffic to get to the west end. I guarantee you, if you start to some restaurants and stuff on the west end, they have the ability to go across the street to Hope and then get to the west end. Some of the, some of the places down there, and you've heard from those businesses who don't like it blocked off there. You've heard them. They've come to this commission meeting, dude. So, we don't want to put on an event that's bigger than the event is just to spread it out over the whole docks and block the whole docks off. So, it doesn't make sense for us to do that. It doesn't make sense for us to do events such like that and spread it out through the whole docks. But as when this came up last year, if they want to bring forward for you to approve a before event and after event for things like Night in the Islands, I'll listen to it and we'll bring it to you as a co-special event to go on with it. That they would be involved in doing so we can do our portion, the Night of the Islands in the middle. But for a small event like a maritime, which is more of a cultural, historical event, we don't have the scope to do something on the whole. It's a one day, it's a Sunday, one day on a Sunday event. And, you know, I just don't believe, and I've expressed it to the merchants for probably three or four years, I don't believe in spreading out an event just to block off the whole docks and stuff. But, you know, we really don't have any dog in this fight, whatever you want to do. But it just doesn't make sense for us to do it. And, and to spread it out, just, it doesn't make any sense. And so, that's the rest of the story of the thing and why it's this, this is a small historical, cultural event that we only have the place in the middle of the docks. You know, there are those, are, this is mostly local. The restaurants for Night Islands, mostly local things. There's other days on holidays and stuff where you see the crowds from all over the state up and down the street. So, there's arguments on both sides of the thing. We're kind of in the middle and that's where we go. But that's the way we plan these events. And, you know, obviously, we'll listen to whatever direction. But it doesn't make sense for us to span the smaller event just to cover an entire section of the docks.
I'd like to argue that, um, you can make these events larger. Most, most of the merchant association events are very successful. They bring a lot of visitors to Tarpon Springs. We just had a hippie fest. We're having Oktoberfest. We have a seafood fest. And the business owners need that business and they need that revenue and they need those people to come to the docks. So, having a small event, put it in the sponge exchange or put it somewhere else if you can't fill that whole street. Because what's the purpose of blocking off the whole street and not allowing business owners to, to have visitors when you have barricades on the street right at Hope and right at Athens? You know, as, as far as Night in the Islands, that's been going on over 10 years. And, um, I know that the merchants association have wanted to get involved because there's basically only five restaurants that, that, uh, that succeed with that event, and it is a local event. But now we've added Latinate and Maritime Fest. And what's going to be next, will we block off the street for another weekend? And it's just not good for our business owners.
Let me ask you a question, Commissioner. When you have a small event like this one here, and it's concentrated in the center of the sponge dock, can you, uh, the merchant association can add something else to it?
Yes, if the city wanted to work with the merchants association, I'm sure they'd be happy to.
Okay.
But they haven't been asked.
Seems, seems like it would need to get together on that.
Um, we have. They had a standing offer last year when this came up at the meeting that bring a plan to me to supplement those events that they would do. We don't want to put on those ones, but they want to do a supplemental joint event that they could bring it forward and we could talk about, and we could, that was last year when this was brought up last year, and I have not seen that proposal yet. And I'd be glad to see it entertain. We just had, I just had a meeting with the merchant association today about different things. This wasn't brought up. I just found out about this later on this afternoon. We talked about a lot of other things today. We didn't talk about that. All they got to do is bring me a plan for them to do a co-event or supplement. But I'm telling you, there's other people down, up and down the docks that don't agree with that. So, and you've known it because you've heard them and you've seen them up here about blocking the streets unnecessarily. You've heard it. So...
There are people that didn't agree with First Friday either, but look at how successful that's become on Tarpon Avenue.
Okay. I have, I have one question though. But what street, what's the name of the street? Right across from, uh, Shrimp Rack, that street that goes through and ends on?
Our Faris.
Our Faris. So, why can't we extend from our, extend from our Faris? Not saying for, the maritime is a smaller event, but maybe these other big events that we have down there from our Faris all the way down to the other end?
You block off all the parking from the city park, from the, from the paid, not the city parking lot, from the paid parking lot. You block off all the parking lot.
All those parking lots are down at that end.
See, because that would be perfect, because then we're including the other restaurants.
That's always the problem, the route, and you can't get down to the major parking lots, which are those parking lots.
Okay.
Blares to the side and off. You can't do it at our Faris.
Because that, that would be just the ultimate solution right there. Okay.
Commissioner Seber, can we, uh, can you provide the different scenarios on how I can make that to work that we can be?
I think we need to have another discussion with the merchants association. And, and the person who helps with these events, I think, needs to be a little more open-minded to work with the merchants association because that's been a problem in the past. And I've heard the complaints. So, I, I'm just saying what I'm hearing, and I know it's, it's a, it's a problem. And it's, it's just not fair to our business owners.
Mayor, I'm sure you can. Mark, is it possible if we could defer this, would still all time for the next meeting if we're to have it on the agenda? Then that would, that, that, that would give you two weeks to?
Well, I don't think this item, because this item wouldn't be able to be done and stuff. I think what we need to talk about is the next cycle of Night of the Islands, which we're on the break. This is the last, last, or this weekend is the last weekend of the series. The time to talk about is when we, because this is too small event, too short a time, um, with two weeks to go. The time would be talked about, and my, my offer to them stands. And for the second year in a row, my offer stands, um, that they bring a concept and stuff. And they were also told, um, again, you know, I'm repeating myself what I have said. I heard about the other person that worked on, I told them to bring it to me. So, I will still be ready to meet and entertain. Again, I had a meeting with them this morning and that wasn't brought up. Be glad to meet with them and talk about what supplement events to Night Islands. But I don't want to, every event I put on, a smaller cultural, cultural things I do, have to worry about expanding it to a whole dock. Night of the Islands is the main one that takes up most of the time. If we want to talk about that or we want to talk about the sauce of things, again, my idea to them last year was some kind of, I don't like saying party, like the nightclub and stuff, but an after-party or before-party. But a before-shopping or something event or an after-something event. You know, that was my suggestion for them to bring back to me, and they did not bring it back to me. I'm, I'm waiting for it and I'd be glad to talk to them when they bring it back to me.
So, again, for this event, which is scheduled November 5th, is it too late now?
Yes.
Too late at what? I mean, what? If we delay it until 17, we can't, I mean, is it, what, what would prevent us from?
What are you going to expand it? What are we?
I don't, I don't have any answers, nor do I know or, you know, and I'm, oh, I'll keep my opinions to myself. But it would give you two weeks, you know, to figure out, you know, maybe there's some things we can do and help it move around. And then move, bring it, bring it, bring, bring, bring it back at the next meeting. And we can have more, more, more of an answer on this and then, and then vote it up or down. I mean, just, you know, because we're not going to get anywhere tonight, just going back and forth. Because I, I have no, I don't, no clue what, what this is or what Commissioner Seber knows or what you know or whatever. So, there's a motion to defer it so we don't cancel it. Because it sounds like a really good event, and that way we get some more information behind, you know, if the merchants, um, uh, could do something along with it and then maybe have it being supported at, at, at the, at the next meeting. I mean, you know, is, is there a reason why we can't do, is there some internal reason why we can't do that?
Because I can tell you right now, there's nothing the city can do to expand that event any farther enough. You want them to bring forward an idea what they want to do in that section?
That's, that's the onus is on them because they're the ones that I think that, that are voicing this concern. You know, that's it. I mean, just, just as long as we can still have, be able to, uh, be, be able to approve it at the next meeting and it still happens. Because I don't want it to go tonight and then, and then, and then not pass. And then, and then, and then lose the event. Is, 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 do you, do you see what I'm saying, you know?
I see what you're saying. I just...
I don't know if there's an answer or not, but it at least gives them the opportunity to come to you and bring you a solution, to do something after, before, or whatever. I, 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 I agree with you that there's probably limitations on what we can close down and open. But that would at least give them the opportunity in this case to, to bring that forward. If they don't, they don't. And then we, we, we just move on.
What would be yours?
Uh, Vice Mayor, this is an all-day event, so there wouldn't be any before or after. It would be...
Well, whatever y'all want to do. I just, you know, I don't have a shop down there. I have two buildings off, off Tarpon Avenue. So, I don't have a dog in this fight per se, but I, I, I want to make sure that, you know, people that are, that are concerned about this can meet with Mark and talk about it regardless of what's happened in the past and try and move forward. Because I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't like when stuff's pulled in the back and forth and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, I would motion to, to defer this to, to the next meeting and direct Mark to meet with the merchant association if they're willing to.
I'll second that.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Carr, you have something to say?
Um, I think you guys did a pretty good job, so I'll leave it at that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yeah.
We are now going to the item number 10, which is the ordinance 2017-25, Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Land Use Amendment from residential urban to residential low medium for 721 Mango Circle. This is the first reading. The City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2017-25, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for approximately 9.45 acres of property located at 721 Mango Circle. App 17-93, from RU residential urban to RLM residential low medium. Providing for findings and providing an effective date. It's first reading of ordinance 2017-25 by title only. Second reading to be held on October 17, 2017. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September 1, 2017.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners. Heather Ehrler, Planning and Zoning Director and staff for this application. This is the Mango Circle property that the housing authority has worked for some time to try to make some changes to that. In going with their newest, um, iteration, which you will see in the hopefully near future, they have, um, come to us and voiced some concern with the density. Right now, they're currently allowed up to 7.5 units per acre under the residential urban, and they need to go to the 10 units per acre. What they're like, what they have now is 61 units. They want to go to 70 to 71. And they need this change in order to make that density work for them. So, essentially, what the city has agreed to do is to amend the future land use category. The zoning category actually is residential multifamily 15 units per acre. We can't get them to that 15 units per acre in the future land use at this time until we can move mirrors, uh, the Mango mirrors roadway, which will eventually come to fruition with the mirrors project into the PSTA's corridor mapping program. So, as soon as we can get that in there, we will seek, um, for them to go to the higher density. But this is the stopgap measure to get them where they need to go so that we don't hold up their grant application, which is going to go forward. And hopefully, they're going to be successful. We're hoping this time, this is an affordable housing project. They did such a great job on the villages. And so, we've had, um, some real interest in them now moving forward on Mango Circle. So, it's something that the Planning and Zoning Department is very, is in support of at this, at this point. It's something that's very consistent. This was heard at, uh, the Planning and Zoning Board. And there actually were a couple of comments from adjacent proprietors at the Mobile Home Park who voiced great support. And when is it going to start? They, they really just had some concerns with some of the things that have happened there in the past. And they were happy to hear that the housing authority is moving forward. So, with that, it meets the criteria for, um, in your land development code, for a map amendment to, um, the future land use element of your comp plan. So, with that, staff is recommending approval, and I can go through any of the particulars that you want. But it's 9.45 acres essentially going for residential, from residential urban, which is the 7.5 units per acre, to residential low to medium, which is 10 units per acre. And I can answer any questions you have.
Heather, thank you for the presentation, and, uh, we really need affordable housing in Tarpon Springs. And this is the second time that we're working on this project. My question is, I think, uh, with this density, is that going to be, to be able to give funding from, uh?
We're hoping, yeah, I mean, the housing authority is hoping, yes, they're hoping that they'll be successful with the, with this density. They know that these number of units are going to work for them with the project that they're doing because they're going to do a little bit of a change to the site plan that you see out there now. And that'll be coming in the future.
Thank you. Any permission, comments, questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to the item number 11, which is to approve hurricane assistance for the employees. Vice Mayor will do the presentation.
Thank you. Um, as we know with Irma, we all had, you know, expenses that, you know, we lost money via the food in our fridge, minor damage to our homes, and, and the list can go, go, go on and on. If you watch the news, um, uh, you know, several large companies, I know that, um, I believe it was, um, the healthcare company, you know, it's MaR United, and I think possibly Nielsen offered some assistance to, to their employees. When it comes to the City of Tarpon Springs, we all know that our, our, our employees for the most part are not rich and that someone like, 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 like a hurricane can take a, a big hit to their pocketbook. And it would, and it, and it was even mentioned in a public comment in the last meeting about a bonus to certain employees that were involved. Well, in, in the meeting with the city manager, you know, we don't really do a bonus in, 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 uh, city government. That's not appropriate. But we certainly can use the appropriate money that, that we have put away to help our employees when obviously they, 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 they have suffered a legitimate loss. So, I like the plan that our city manager has, has put together, I assume with Mr. Ron, Ron Herring, where each full-time employee will get $400. This is in addition to their pay, obviously. And each part-time employee, well, will get $200. Uh, this is, it, this is tax, right, Mark? This is, are we going to do it in a separate check?
Yes.
And will this be next week if it's approved?
Yes.
So I just think this is, this is, this is the least we can do to, A, help our employees who were hit hard by the, by, by this hurricane, and second off, thank them because a lot of them, I know, because I, I was there at, at the EOC work, um, they were, they were working shift work while their families were, were at home, especially our first responders and police officers. I think that this is the very least we can do to, to, to say thank you and to help them. I know this was not just my idea. The, everyone on, 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 on this board had discussions with Mark after the hurricane, how can we thank employees? So I just thought it was good to go ahead and bring it up before we, we get too far away from, from the storm. So again, uh, full-time employees would, would get $400 and part-time would get 200.
Yeah.
I would obviously exclude the city commission from that, so thank you.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and I do support to provide finance assistance to our employees. But I'd like to ask Mr. Herring, since he's in the audience there, to, uh, explain to the audience about, uh, where the funding will come from.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. The funds, the total funds will be a hundred and, roughly around a hundred and $20,000. The general fund portion would be $80,000 and the other funds would come around like $40,000. Did you need any further explanation?
I was going to ask you, is, can you explain how you've been able to split it, like 80,000 from, uh, general fund and, uh, 40,000 from other funds?
It goes by what budget that the employee is in?
Okay, that's what I want to, yeah.
Yeah, we took the number of employees in the general fund, 188 employees, times the $400 came to 75,000. 26 employees in the general fund, times the $200 came to 5,226 dollars. And in the other funds, which is mostly water and sewer, 92 employees, times $400 is 36,960. And then 13 part-time employees, times the $200 came to 2,574 dollars. And if you total the, let's say the 80,266 in the general fund, the 39,534 and mostly the water and sewer fund came to the 119,800 dollars.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any, uh, permission comments? Motion.
Thank you. I just want to, um, thank, um, Vice Mayor Banther for bringing this forward, and yet we, um, there was some comments at our last meeting that we should, um, reward our employees somehow because they all worked very hard during the hurricane. Uh, they put in so many hours and they did have to leave their families as well. Um, so we were closed for a few days as well, so they also got compensated. I don't believe we took any PTO time from there or anything, so they were paid for that as well when the city was closed. So again, this, we are family here, and if we can take care of our own, I certainly would support that. Thank you.
Uh, I also like to say that we also had appreciation lunch with the employees, which was compliments of our local restaurants to thank them for their work.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what I've said in other meetings. Uh, we've got a great city staff here. A lot of dedicated individuals that live here locally in town and throughout the area. Um, just want to say a big thank you again to the Fire and Police Department and all the city crews that are out there, um, that really kept our, our city clean. Um, like Mr. Kuskudas mentioned earlier, uh, it really could have been a disaster where we had sewage throughout the streets, but our, uh, team really did a good job to, um, get those lift stations up and running and keep them going throughout the nights.
Well, yes, I have to agree with all of you, and thank you for bringing this to, to our attention, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHousas?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 12. The appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. There are currently three members who have reached their term limits. And there are two members who their term has expired, but both are eligible to be reappointed and both wish to be reappointed. One of the options that we have is to reappoint, uh, uh, Mr. Merle Seaman and Neil Hess to another three-year term on the Planning and Zoning Board. That, that term will expire October 1st, 2020. Uh, in addition to that, we can, um, move the, uh, alternate, Mr. Coynor as a regular member, and then we need to appoint two members from the list. The other option that we have is to, uh, appoint three members from the list. So Vice Mayor?
Okay, assuming I've read this correctly, I would. So we can, so would the number?
The first one is.
The first one is to just reappoint Merle Seaman and Neil Haas, which is great. And then we do, and then, and then we do, we do 2A, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
2A or 2B?
Okay, I, I would move, um, for 2A to move the current alternate to the, to the regular position, which is what we usually try and do. And then for the remaining two positions, fill that with Mr. Stravopoulos and Mr. Frame.
Okay. Commissioner Kikta?
Um, yes, I would agree. I would, um, like to reappoint Merle and Seaman and Neil Haas to another three-year term to expire October 1st, 2020. I'd like to move the current alternate, David Coynor, as a regular member, uh, term to expire October 1st, 2020, and I'd like to appoint Mrs. Stravopoulos and Mr. Frame to fill the two vacant positions. Terms will expire October 1st, 2020.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I agree. I'm not going to repeat all that, but I would, uh, appoint Jim Stravopoulos and, and Tommy Frame.
Okay, Commissioner Cory?
Still understand, there's, is there six or five positions that we're filling here?
Well.
It sounds like, I thought it was three. So I thought it was two full-time and one alternate. Am I right in that?
Two are reappointments, and then it was a choice that we have two other full-time members. But if you move up Mr. Coynor, then we have, we need two members and an alternate. So in addition to, if you do 2A, you would need an additional person for an alternate.
Yeah, if I just say option one, we don't, I don't need to do any notes.
Option one is by itself. Option one is just for reappointment, so y'all.
Okay.
On that, option, and then, so option one is done, regardless. Option 2A or 2B is what you choose from.
Okay.
If you go with 2A, you move the current alternate up.
Understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, 2A, uh, with, uh, Mr., Mr. Jim, I'm not going to say his last name because I won't do very well with that, and, um, Gabriella.
Well, that leaves me. Of course, number one is a given, reappoint Seaman and Hess. Number two is to move Mr. Coynor to a, a regular position, and I will go with, uh, Mrs. Stravopoulos and Mr. Frame. Any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Uh, motion, so I gotta, I gotta repeat all that, right? Hold on, let me, let me get that out.
I got it.
Uh, motion to reappoint Merle Seaman and Neil Haas and, um, to move the current alternate, uh, Mr., Mr. Coynor to the regular position and appoint Mr., Mr. Stravopoulos and Mr. Frame to fill the two vacant positions that will expire October 1st, 2020.
Second.
Enroll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHousas?
Yes.
Now, in addition to that, you would need a person to fill the alternate position of Mr. Coynor.
I would recommend Ms. Pace.
I will recommend Melissa Viggo.
I'll recommend, um, 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 Mrs. Pace.
Mrs. Pace?
Mrs. Pace.
And you?
I said, I was the first one to say Mrs. Pace.
Okay. So, uh, I need a motion for that.
To, uh, appoint, um, Mrs. Pace to the, um, alternate position.
And second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any public comments on this portion of the item? Here none. Enroll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHousas?
Yes. And now we're going to item number 13, which is the appointment to the fire pension board. The, uh, recommendation that we have is to reappoint Mr. Bolden and, uh, Mr. Chris Angelo. Or we can select two other members from the list. And I'll start with Mr. Cory.
Number one, reappoint the two members.
I agree.
Mr. Seber?
I agree.
You agree? Mr. Cory? I mean, Commissioner Kikta?
I agree.
Okay, Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll also select that. Any public comments on that item? I need a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint Jim Bolden and Chris Angelo to another term on the fire pension board. These terms will expire September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHousas?
Yes. Well, that concludes the regulation session meeting, and it's adjourned at 7:50 PM. And we are now going to the CRA meeting. I now call to order the community redevelopment agency meeting to the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017 at 7:51 PM. Roll call please.
Chair LaHousas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Item number one is the minutes for March 21st, 2017, May 16th, 2017, and August 15th, 2017. Are there any, uh, permission comments on this? On the minutes?
Um, I wasn't on the board on March 21st. Is there an issue with me voting on this at all? Okay.
Any public comments on this item? Here none? I need, I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
Yes.
Chair LaHousas?
Yes. Thank you. And now going to the item number two, consider mediated settlement agreement with Fund City Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of Sun Bay Motel property 57 at West Tarpon Avenue. On January 10th, 2017, we gave direction to, uh, city manager, Mr. Licouris, to negotiate with Fund City Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of the property at 57 West Tarpon Avenue and to bring us with his best price possible. Now, Mr. Licouris will present his best agreement that he was able to negotiate with the attorneys through the mediation process. Mr. Licouris, if you please, tell us about it.
Yes. Again, this has been going on against, you directed me on January 10th to do this. Um, at the time, obviously, you gave me, um, and the, and the city attorney, some attorneys who were experienced in that area. Um, although it's an eminent domain, we weren't doing eminent domain because that was a possibility. You did, you also gave me the opportunity to hire an appraiser to do a thorough appraisal to see the actual value of the property. Um, we did all those things. Obviously, the property owner did the same thing. And while, you know, I think we hired the best attorney in the area to do it, they hired what might be considered the second best. So he hired a good set of attorneys, he hired an appraiser, and we were in the process of us saying what our appraisal said and what the property is worth and them having their appraiser. And when I went to you to ask you to go to the mediation session for city attorney and our, myself, the attorneys we hired to go to mediation, um, we were at a point, obviously, at that point where our appraisal was about $690,000. Their appraisal was 1.4 million. We hadn't made much headway between those two things, so we went to mediation hearing and we spent a whole day on 18th. We spent a whole day, um, going from those two extremes to try to gain the goal that you set before to do to, for us as a team to get you the best deal possible. And after that all-day negotiation, and I will say it was a amicable, uh, meetings, the, their attorney and, and the owner of the motel. Um, it was a good set. There was no, you know, animosity, no, it was very professional negotiation throughout. I don't want to praise everybody on that because I've been at mediations before where it hasn't been pleasant. But both sides were trying to work, obviously, for their clients to get to the best deal. You see where we were to start with. The agreement that I sent to you, that you, that we bring to you tonight, and we told them that you would decide whether to approve or not, um, is the agreement you have for you to purchase the motel for $910,000, additional $55,000 in attorney fees and various else conditions as you see in there, um, um, in the agreement. So that agreement that you have is subject to approval. I can certify you after that whole day was the best agreement that we could negotiate at that time. So I've brought that to you for approval. Obviously, along with that, you did give me, um, the charge also is to bring you how to finance it. And one of the major reasons is there is a serious concern about what effect it would have on the CRA. Um, obviously, what you're doing of buying a property within the CRA is proper because one of the things you're supposed to do is, is eliminate blight. If you consider that motel blight, then, then you're doing the right thing. So there's no question really about your right and ability to do that. Um, but again, there was a concern about how to pay for it. I think back in August and September last year, I told you when we started this process and talked about doing with the CRA that we had some money available in the CRA, but, um, we'd have to work at some other areas of funding. Obviously, working with Karen Lemons closely, who's close with the CRA and do it. We have also, um, done the second part about what you asked me to do and given you a finance plan where we will not affect grants in the CRA. It is spread out from a borrowing, and we gave you two funds, but we will recommend, uh, uh, a borrowing from the water and sewer fund. If it gets to that, that's going to be an item. If the one passed, you have to go. But right now, you'll be using $500,000 of CRA funds towards the purchase. As you can see, even with that 500, besides everything budgeted this year, you'll still have 236,000 discretionary money. And every year after that, um, there's a loan to the penny fund that this, that, of close to $200,000 that is being paid full this coming year and then half of it the next year. So the payments for the water and sewer fund will not start after that, where there'll be first a half payment and then spread out $175,000 payments for the next few years. As you can see on what I gave you, the bottom line gives plenty of discretionary money that there will be no effect to do projects, do additional grants or whatever you want to do. So what I have given you and bring forward for, for your approval is the best deal that we can, that I can negotiate with the team that we have. I've given you the finance that I think will cause the least impact on the CRA funds and, and pull this off. And I bring it forward to you for your decision on the matter that we have to give tonight, uh, per the, the mediated settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Licouris. I have to say that, uh, I am very unhappy with the outcome of these negotiations. Even though that our city manager and our city attorneys did a great job, but let me tell you why I feel this way. The value of this property, the Sun Bay Motel, is $315,000. And combined with the value of the business, it was appraised for $690. The owner is asking $910,000 for the city to purchase his property. So he's actually asking $220,000 more than it's worth. Plus, he wants us to pay additional. Plus, he wants us to pay additional fifty-five thousand dollars for his attorney fees. So the price tag is actually two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more that we shouldn't have to pay. Even though they're supported by this property only with a logical price to be useful to our community. I cannot justify for the C R A to pay two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more for this property that it's worth. Obviously, the owner of this property is not realistic. My, uh, fellow commissioners. We serving as a community redevelopment agency. I recommend that we reject this agreement and to authorize the city manager, Mr. Licouras, and our city attorney to go back and make an offer, a reasonable offer to the, to this property owner. And not to use the eminent domain specialist attorney so we don't have to pay the extra money from the C R A. I think we can do just as good job as with city attorney and our city manager. I believe the seat of Tarpon Springs should not be blackmailed because our efforts to stop the negative issues that the current owner is not addressing. I'm sure, and I know that we have some definitely ideas if the owner does not stop and he's continuing doing and not addressing the problems that he has. Again, I want to make sure that it's understood that I recommend to reject this agreement and to authorize Mr. Licouras and our city attorney to go back and make a reasonable offer to the property owner. And I would like to ask Mr., uh, Vice Mayor Panther if he has any comments.
I do. Um, I think it's important to look at the history of while we're doing this because I think if you saw from the mayor, you'll hear from me and my colleagues and people from, 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 from the public. It's not a black and white issue. It's not like I'm for it or I'm against it. There's people that are kind of on different sides, uh, of each group there. Um, but there is a contingent here that obviously would not want us to purchase it under, under any circumstances. Uh, I think you have, yeah, you have to look back to, to, to what has happened. It is true that, you know, and I said before that I do take some blame. And we as a city allowing this property and the, and the other ones, uh, though around it, to get to the condition where it's at, to get to a point where we have to take these, 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 these types of actions. And I believe, um, uh, we, we have improved our code enforcement a, as, as a city, and I think that moving forward, we, we, we will make sure that properties don't get to, to, to this level. But after we had the shooting there and, and the murder, if you will, we had, um, uh, you know, a, a knock cry from, from, from the public, and rightfully so. We had the people that formed the Facebook group and came before us, many here are still here in this room, some, 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 some are on this board, and charged us with fixing the, the, this, this, this problem. I think when it comes to this particular property, and I realize when we labeled the nuisance properties, we have three in mind. But when it comes to this particular property, um, you know, we, we have tried numerous police things that, that haven't successful. Um, but they tend to, 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 to just go right back. We have tried numerous code enforcement things, and they tend to just patch it up and, and, and not do anything. So we can continue to, to go through and do these things on a piece of property that is right at the crest of the bayou and keep spinning our wheels to, to no avail. It is odd, though, it's obvious that this property owner has no interest in abiding by the rules, only until he could be temporarily shut down, then, then, then he patches the problem and then, and then, and then he opens back up. Because it, it's been said to me by many people, why don't we just go and shut him down? That's not the proper role, role of city government first. And second, we, 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 we just can't shut, shut, shut a business down. We can, you know, through code enforcement and through, um, through the fire marshal, make sure that they're, 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 they're up to code, but they, they, they do a Band-Aid job and they're, and they're back open. So I agree that, that this is a problem that needs to be fixed and that, and that needs to be solved. And I think that's what led up to us charging the city manager to look at purchasing this property and the Hoffman lot, which I'm still in favor of. As a, as a package deal to, uh, make a public event space for, 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 for the, for the city. When it comes to, uh, eminent domain, that's something that no one on this board, I assume, would, 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 would want to do. You go into court, you have no clue what, what, what the outcome's going, 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 going to be, and unlike how, how we're here tonight, we don't get to vote to accept or not accept the, uh, judge's offer or, 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 you know, ruling rather. So I'm very glad, regardless of what happens tonight, that we're sitting here having this conversation and we're, and we're not, we're not doing this in court. Um, I, 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 I do sympathize with some of the mayor's concerns, uh, about, about the price of this property. Um, you know, I, I'm, 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 I'm not quite sure what more negotiations we'll do. Perhaps we could get down more. It's, it, it, it's, it, 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 that, that, that is certainly possible. But at least from, 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 from what I've witnessed over the past nine months and what I'm told by our attorneys and Mark, that's not the case. But we, we, we can wait and see what, 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 what happens there. Um, and obviously, by us purchasing this with, uh, C R A funds, it gives us much more flexibility in the redevelopment of this property than if we had eminent domain. If we had eminent domain, it's, it's, it's strictly for that public use that we identify in, in, in the lawsuit. Here with doing a private sale, we can do new, 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 numerous things with it. And again, I, 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 I do stress that my, my goal is still to have this and, and, and the Hoffman property together if we can come to, you know, terms on financials on that. Um, it has been mentioned before, why don't we go to referendum on this? Well, the, like, 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 like Mark said, when, when, when he opened up, the very purpose of a C R A is to eliminate blight. You know, having lived here since I was four years old, moving from, um, over in Dunedin, I, I can't think of a property that's such an important part of Tarpon Springs that is more of a blight. And the opportunity that we have here before us to purchase that property, whether it's the price we have be, be, be for us tonight, or if our team does go back and renegotiates, uh, something better. Um, that's where that money i- i- is to be used for. We're not subverting some, 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 some process. We did the same thing when, 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 when we purchased or, or we built the parking lot between the factless building and the little, and, and the small tavern. It, that is the purpose of C R A funds, so we're not trying to subvert the general fund or our duties as, 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 as the B O C. We are, we are, we are simply, you know, purchasing this in the way that it should be purchased. And I'm very pleased also, and it's a relief because the, our downtown improvement grants, the C R A grants, where there's many people in this room that have, that have benefited from that, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm very happy about that, will not be hurt if, if we go through with this purchase tonight or some modification of it. So that is a satisfaction to me. You know, and when, when we look at how we've used C R A funds, I, I think we have often forgot about West Tarpon Avenue. Tarpon Avenue does not just run from Pinellas to Rain. You know, I have two office buildings between, uh, Diston and Dora, and I've never come up here and asked for anything for it and nor, 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 nor will I. And I've had to spend north of ten thousand dollars on the issues of security and homeless sleeping there and whatnot. But we all know that the west side of Tarpon Avenue, but between the bayou and Pinellas has, has, has not been the recipient of, 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 of these funds. And I, I, I think it is time that, that we look at redevelopment of, of that area. I believe that purchasing this, this, this property would spur that, that redevelopment. As we all know, the owner of the other motel across the street passed away. I'm not sure what the ownership is there now. But I believe by, by us acquiring this property, it would finally possibly spur, you know, somebody to go in and do what we all have talked about, this boutique hotel over there. Because, you know, no one's, you know, all properties for sale. It might not have a for sale sign out front, but if you're, if you're in real estate or business, um, everything's always for sale. And obviously, no, no, no serious developer has been able to, uh, you know, uh, up, up to this point, purchase these properties or make anything of them. So I believe by investing these, these, these C R A funds in the redevelopment of, of the west side of Tarpon Avenue, we can help start that redevelopment and finally clean up an area where, I mean, for goodness sakes, we possess past there in Epiphany. Right past a motel that has every drug and sin imaginable. I can't think of a better use personally of, of, of C R A funds than, than to clean that up. You know, as far as what, 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 what moves forward tonight, um, you know, I, I think if we don't act on this, I think we as a board have to be able to bear the responsibility. That moving forward, we are, we are responsible for what happens down there. I think we are regardless, but especially after tonight, when we have the opportunity to, 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 to purchase this, this, this piece of property. You know, if, if, if there's a murder there tomorrow night, six months from now, something happens during, during Epiphany or, 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 or whatnot, we have nobody to blame. We can't say, well, we need better code enforcement. Well, we need, we need, we need, we need better policing. Well, we should talk to, to, to the owner. We have tried all those things. So, you know, how, how, I think how we move forward tonight is, is, you know, and I realize there could be some work i- i- in, in the pricing, and I respect the mayor's comments on that. How, how we move forward tonight is a signal of are we serious about redeveloping the, the, uh, west side of Tarpon Avenue? And second off, um, owning the responsibility of what has happened at all these three properties. Con Deck down on, by, 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 by Grand to the old, to the old, um, property across the street from, from, from this one, and then the Sun Bay. Because we have an opportunity tonight to, 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 you know, stop to, uh, to stop this, this problem out, you know, at this location. It's not going to go away completely. Okay, I'm not saying this, that this is a magic wand, but it, but it's a huge first step in us taking serious crime and redevelopment on, 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 on the west side of Tarpon Avenue. So me personally, I am in favor of, 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 of this tonight. Um, you know, if, if Mark and our attorney tells me that we can possibly go back and, uh, uh, you know, renegotiate better, I'm not opposed to, to that, to, to the, to that as well. Um, but I, 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 I am in support of buying this, this, this property outside of court with, 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 with the, with the C R A funds for the reasons that I have said tonight. And I, I, I do want to thank everyone that's contacted us by email and phone and in person. I realize there's, there's, again, like, like, like I said in the, in the very beginning, this is not black and white. I realize there are, there are fair arguments against doing this or doing it i- i- in, in a different way. So I do want to acknowledge that and people that might speak in, 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 in opposition to, to me tonight, so, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber, you want to comment?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, I agree, we do need to get rid of this nuisance, uh, in, in a beautiful area of our, uh, community. Um, and I am always concerned about the safety of our residents and our business owners. But this is only one nuisance property down there. We have another property across the street with the Tarpon Inn, and of course, the property on Grand where Officer Con Deck was killed, and we must never forget that. Just last Sunday, I had a business owner from the west end of, of Tarpon contact me and sent me pictures of an arrest at Tarpon Inn. So getting rid of this one property, I don't believe we'll get rid of the nuisance down there or the crime. Um, and what kind of precedent are we setting with buying just this one property? Will we purchase all properties? Um, C R A funds are for development, uh, or redevelopment and have been very successful, um, used downtown and throughout our city with facade grants and, and restaurant grants. But I just want people to please not be confused with this funding proposal because whichever way the city proposes to fund this property, uh, it is still coming from the C R A. Um, I've had several people contacting me being concerned about, well, this is not all coming from C R A because it's being funded from here or from there, or whatever they, they understood. But this is all being funded from the C R A if we go forward with this. Uh, I do take issue with the way this is, uh, whether this is a sound investment, though. Spending over a million dollars for a possible return of maybe two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an empty lot, uh, is a loss, uh, any way you look at it. Uh, so spending this money, we will not get that in return. There's no developer that will pay us over a million dollars for an empty lot. Um, so, and that might not be the only, uh, cost to us. Uh, we may find asbestos, uh, which we would have to remove, uh, plus the cost of maintaining that lot to the city. So there will be additional expenses. So for every dollar that our taxpayer invests, we, you know, say the C R A will see twenty-five cents invested for. That is not sound, uh, to me. Another very important point about CRAs, and this is something maybe all of you do not know, but, uh, has been going on this past, uh, year in legislature. Uh, Tallahassee wants to end CRAs. Legislators have been looking very closely at how cities have been spending money, uh, with their CRAs, and cities across the state have fought to keep their CRAs. Uh, do we want to put ourselves in jeopardy? They will be looking at us if we spend over a million dollars of our C R A funds. No one will pay one million dollars, as I said, for an empty lot. The appraisal that was done included the business. So when the business is gone, that lot will not be worth any, close to that amount of money. There are many ways we could use over a million dollars. We could increase our police force presence. We could sue this property owner. We could pursue getting, uh, his license revoked. In fact, I did call D B P R again today because I did promise some citizens that I would do that. And it's very difficult to put someone out of business. We can't just do that. I know, I know a lot of people say, why can't we just put them out of business? But just because you don't like a business, you can't just put them out of business, and that's, uh, can't be, it has to be done legally. Um, apparently, there was, uh, a complaint filed yesterday, uh, with D P P R, and that's what they need to see is many complaints. And every time there's a formal complaint filed, they have to come out and investigate it. Unfortunately, to relisten that place once a year, they go in and investigate, and they can only look at rooms that are open. But when they do complain about a particular room, whether it has bedbugs or, or, uh, roaches or rodents or whatever, they have to look at that room. So that is one way to, to continue to, to, to look at this hotel. Um, another thing with expending, spending this kind of money is let's not forget, we were very lucky recently with the storm that passed by us. It was only category one, and we had minimal damage. Uh, if we were have to, if we had a much worse, uh, catastrophe, uh, would it justify us throwing away this kind of money? Uh, another important consideration is that if homestead exemption law passes, the city will be, uh, losing approximately five hundred thousand dollars in revenue, according to Mr. Herring. And how do we justify, again, throwing this much money away? How does spending this much money make any sense? We've solved this type of problem before on U S nineteen with the Days Inn, where there was also prostitution and drug activity, and found a developer to buy that property, spend the money to demolish it. Uh, and is now a very successful, uh, business where we are, uh, getting a, a good amount of revenue from reload. Uh, this hotel business owner has been a continuous problem to our city. And now we want to reward him and pay for his retirement. Should we be rewarding this kind of man? Uh, of course, he was amicable. He's going to get a million dollars and he can retire. I would be amicable too. That's way over what we should be spending. I cannot support spending over a million dollars of taxpayers' money. Uh, we went to referendum for the Walton property, and I feel that this property purchase should also be decided by our taxpayers. I therefore make a motion that we move this item to the B O C for a vote.
Let's wait for the, uh, for the motion. Let's hear from everyone and then from the.
Wanted to say, put it out there.
Yeah. We shake it.
Thank you. I, I want to thank everybody for being here this evening because this, this is, um, uh, a tough situation that we are in. Um, so I'm going to reiterate a few things here. Um, the property appraised for six ninety, and we're talking about spending close to a million or over a million dollars on this property. I, I honestly don't think that this is a good business decision on our part. Uh, even in my personal life, I am in, um, finance and mortgages, and I would never have one of my customers spend that much money over appraised value on a piece of property. It's just not good business sense. Um, we don't even have a plan for this property, so we're willing to spend almost a million dollars of taxpayers' money on a property we have no plan for. Even if we decide to make it a parking lot, we're going to be paying about a million dollars for a parking lot. Again, I don't believe that's a good business decision. Um, also, we would be, you know, rewarding a property owner with bad behavior and taking this nuisance off his hands. What kind of example is that setting? There's also a problem across the street, like, um, Commissioner Seber said. I, I've got an email as well this weekend. Um, there was an arrest at the Tarpon Inn. So there's, there's still a problem in the community. Buying the Sun Bay is not going to, going to, um, fix the problem. Um, so what do we do? Spend three to four million dollars and buy the uh Tarpon Inn as well? Again, it just, it doesn't make sense. And if we took the property off our tax rolls, we're talking about sixty six hundred dollars a year out of our tax base. So again, that's lost in revenue as well. I understand it is part of the Golden Crescent area and I know something needs to be done but down there. Um, I've discussed this before and I'll say it again, there is a way that we could shut the business down with the chronic nuisance ordinance. We've already been working on this for a year, so we have a lot built up on the, you know, a lot of issues built up with the property. There's there was a murder there, there's uh many arrests. Um, so and this code this code violation. So I believe that this owner is coming in front of the code board soon to clear some of the or these code violations. So right there, we already have a history with the property. So you know, um, what if we have another arrest or um code violations there, like Commissioner Seber said, she's called the DPBR. So maybe I'm not I know this has been done in other cities, so if we have, we're we're building a case here already. So maybe, you know, like I said, there's some more other complaints, we could probably take that route and um take the, shut them down by the chronic nuisance law. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but uh that's something that um has been brought up to me. Um, I think we need to continue to monitor the situation down there um very closely. And I also believe that I know that we're paying for funds with the CRA, with the CRA money funds, but and then we're going to be moving some other funds over from a from another fund, some more monies over from another fund. So wouldn't this be something that the Budget Advisory Board should be looking at before we make that decision? Um, that's something I wanted to throw out there. I will not support eminent domain, but I think that uh there are other ways to go about this. And I, like I said, paying a million dollars for this piece of property, it's not a very buildable piece of property. It's very narrow. Uh, you'd be limited on parking. So um, I just don't think it's a good business decision. Maybe one of the owners on either side might want to make an offer and purchase the property. Don't know. That could be thrown out there. We have an economic development specialist. Maybe she can approach them. Um, but you know, these are my thoughts right now on this, on this issue. And again, um, maybe we should bring it up to the voters and make it a ref on, put it on a referendum and let the voters decide. Let our citizens decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Thanks. I've got a um a couple of questions and uh for the attorney. Uh, Mr. Attorney, can you um explain to the board and remind us and the citizens here and the citizens watching on TV uh what the responsibilities of a CRA actually are?
The CRAs were originally created back in in nineteen sixty nine to uh to address the problem, excuse me, of slum and blighted areas. So the legislature found at that point that uh eh these types of areas were injurious to the public health, safety, morals, et cetera. Uh, and so broad brush stroke, the CRA is designed to eliminate those types of areas using a number of mechanisms. Um, by acquisition, clearance, disposition, um, any number of other ways to uh to address blighted areas within uh the boundaries of the CRA. Uh, I I don't know that I would necessarily define them as obligations. All right, you're not required to have a CRA, but you do. Um, but that is, those are within the powers of the CRA.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that for me. Uh, there isn't, there is other options, right? But it's, it seems like that it takes many, many years for something like this to to come to fruition. And then if it does get a court, correct me if I'm wrong, that it depends on what the judge judges feelings are on it. It's not black and white and then they really don't like taking businesses away. Am I, and did I interpret that correctly?
I think you have. We've discussed that in the past. I know that we've discussed in this room uh proceeding a nuisance or proceeding in other eh in other avenues against the property. It it's a, it's a last resort, if you will. It's a nuclear option for a court to order a business closed. I mean, it's 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 tough to do. Uh, it's not unheard of. It is done from time to time. I think that we've uh in this area and the newspaper seen the uh the story of the Millsy Motel down in Saint Petersburg, uh and and they're not certainly exclusive, but that's a more recent example. You know, my my reading of the cases, eh and there aren't many that authorize the closing of a business, that's a last step in a long process. Uh, it's going to be a long and expensive process. On the facts that we presently have, uh you know, code enforcement's been working hard with this property. Uh, our police department has been working hard with this property. The building department has been working with this property. The fire department has been working with this property. At present, I believe they are at least code compliant, eh notwithstanding any other law enforcement issues that are that are that pop up from time to time. We don't have similar facts to the Millsy Motel or some of those other other cases where closure has been authorized. Uh, the chronic nuisance ordinance i- isn't going to get us there either. It it just doesn't. The chronic nuisance ordinance really isn't designed for that. That's really designed more for uh eh to to impose a financial penalty and to get the property owner involved in cleaning the place up, not closing it. Now theoretically, you could have a lien that uh that could be foreclosed, but again, you're looking at a long time down the road. You're looking at probably a very long and drawn out and expensive legal battle to get to that point, if that's a um, a road that the that the commission collectively seeks to go down. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. There are a couple of issues with the chronic nuisance ordinance that should be raised. The first is that the Pinellas County Tax Collector is presently not cooperating with the city on the chronic nuisance code. We're we're still attempting to work that issue out. Uh, also, chronic nuisance codes, including one that is functionally similar to Tarpins, though not Tarpins, uh are being subject to constitutional challenges in Florida, one of which I'm litigating uh in another community here in Pinellas County. So again, there eh those issues, eh those are things that may need to be uh fleshed out in in any kind of proceeding under under code enforcement, under chronic nuisance ordinances or under a a nuisance action in the circuit court. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and follow up to that.
I think you clarified it pretty good for me. So, um, I've I've got a a question actually too for the police chief, just if you, mayor, if that's okay, so you can clarify for me. I know we've got three nuisance properties and um, in the event we take it down to two nuisance properties, can you just express or just share how much easier, if it's easier or harder to go from three to two buildings of nuisances to patrol, to keep in line, et cetera?
Well, every, when you're dealing with crimes like this, vice narcotics, prostitution, drug dealing, um, these crimes are fluid. Putting my police chief's hat on, and again, we have countless resources into these properties, especially Sun Bay. And I have not done a financial analysis on that, but I would say it's a lot. Um, with all the vice operations we've done, um, all the roundups we've done, fire department, fire marshal, we've had state agencies, county agencies, we've had everything involved. Um, but I would rather deal with two properties than three, because then we can focus our resource on two and it's more effective. But again, that's not a clear cut answer either. Um, just based on what's going on down there. Sun Bay is the problem hotel. We've worked very well with Tarpon Inn. Um, that's cleaned their act up pretty much, not totally, but has. Um, Eureka Apartments is getting there. So w- we've made progress down there, but um we have a lot of resources invested into Sun Bay. And like the city attorney said, you know, we can hit them with abatement, we can hit them with chronic nuisance, which the tax collector already said they wouldn't enforce the lien. Um, so we could have countless hours of, you know, police presence, a security plan, putting police officers there, and that could be just countless dollars if you add it up over the course of a year. Um, we also obviously continue to work with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, our vice unit, our patrol division, all these other agencies. So you know, that that's an exhaustive process. But you know, we will continue to do what we have to do down there, but I would much rather focus on two properties than three.
Thanks for bringing your insight for us. Um, listening to um the the rest of the board speak on how they feel about this property and taking some of the comments and and trying to di- digest them. I don't think this is a business decision decision to be made. It's a, it's a really about a a safety decision and then looking at it as a CRA situation as well. Um, this property owner here has been here for many years. It's been a nuisance for many years. The police just mentioned they've done many roundups here. Um, but the property owner is continually producing a fertile environment for drug dealers and prostitution and other crimes to come in to this facility. Um, the city um attorney just shared how difficult it is to take someone's business by law. Um, yes, it's been successful in other communities, but this business isn't there yet to even start the process of this. I mean, we could start documenting it, but it's going to take many, many more years. Like I said, also, this property owner is just doing the bare minimum to stay open. And to me, that's not acceptable. Um, I just want to go over a few things. These aren't my reviews. I just went on Google and Googled some reviews of the Sun Bay Hotel and I've got five of them, so it'll take a minute here to to read these. Um, number one, this place is so bad, the bedbugs are unbelievable. For crying out, the picture they have up on Google has drugs laying on the bed. But that's okay with them. Every night this week, someone had had an ambulance come here. It's no good. Number two, horrible place. Go somewhere else. Don't even go here. This place is filled with lots of drug dealers. Drug addicts coming to buy drugs and illegal activities. Do not go here, go somewhere else. Number three, crackheads, hookers and drugs. Oh, and the occasional murder. Number four, you don't want to stay here. It's utterly disgusting. Drug dealers almost in every room. Place has cops in it every night. It's so dirty and outdated. They charge fifty five dollars a night. Walls, drapes and sheets are all old and nasty. Number five, friendly office staff, but I don't think I'd call this a motel exactly. More like a strange Alice in Construction Wonderland, fun house that humans are sleeping and bathing in. If I were to visit a motel in North Korea, I imagine it would look like this. Those are my words. These are reviews off Google. And looking at this, this is in the heart of downtown in the Bay Area of our community. We have tourists that come here thousands and thousands a year. And when they go online to find a place to stay, this is what they're reading. To me, this is an embarrassment to our town. It's an embarrassment to, I think, our residents. And it's something that's, I believe, is chasing tourists' awe from visiting our great town. Um, these individuals that were referenced in their reviews, these are the same individuals that are walking through our downtown areas and our business owners have been complaining for many years about having shady individuals walking through downtown and complaining about um some of these individuals for quite some time. Um, we really have to ask ourselves, what do we want to see in downtown Tarpon Springs in the Bay Area? Commissioner Banther mentioned something about the Epiphany Celebration, but here are a few more that currently are in our downtown in the Bay Area today. Uh, just recently, the homecoming pictures were taking place right there in the Bay. Our high schoolers and families join at the Bay at the top to take pictures. It's also where they do prom pictures and I believe eighth grade dance pictures. You'll see the kids out there um throughout the year. The Christmas parade where many of our children and grandchildren participate in, go right by this motel where the drug dealers are and the prostitution is. The Epiphany Celebration, weddings, exercise classes, our large arts and craft festival. Um, mains uh main street, excuse me, our tourists that come in and visit walk the bayous. We have a residence also that live in the area and walk the bayous. My question would be, it's not a business decision. It's like, how much is a life worth? That's really what it comes down to. I don't want to give this business owner this much. I think it's a lot of money. I am very prudent in my life and how I live. I don't like spending exorbitant amount of monies. But in this situation, it's something we need, really need to address. This shouldn't be perceived as a discouragement to other businesses that have worked their tails off to be a successful business. This should be an encouragement to them, us by the CRA showing, we're tired of seeing this. We're not taking this. This is not acceptable. And we're going to get rid of this for you guys to help your businesses become better. As the city attorney mentioned, the CRA is designated to foster development in certain areas of town and generate growth. By voting on this tonight, this is exactly what the CRA board would be doing. This motel has been nothing but the opposite of growth and discourages tourism to this great city of Tarpon Springs. By encouraging this, by purchasing this property, it will encourage growth and will also help pull downtown Tarpon into the Bay Area. Where the residents, tourists, business owners, and all will feel safe to walk and be in our community. I don't consider this throwing money away. I consider it investing in our great community. I would like to see this be voted on and approved to purchase tonight.
Thank you. We're now going to the uh public comment. If you please state your name and your address for the record, we'll be giving.
My name is Carl Polk. I live at seven eleven Riverside Drive. Mayor, commissioners, city officials. I have sit here tonight and listened to something that's I can't believe I'm hearing. I was born in this town. My parents came here in nineteen twenties. So I grew up in this town. I saw everything that went on. Do you know that downtown Tarpon Springs at one time used to have a theater? Drug stores with the fountains and other, we had stores all over this town, downtown. Registered apartment store, registers, grocery store, People's Hardware, all these, all these areas, they were thriving businesses. And then what happened? The economy got bad. It can happen. We all know it can happen. Then what happened? Some of the stores, they started closing. And they closed one after another. And some of the stores moved out to the highway. That's the new urban way of doing things, probably. Then what happened? What happened? We started getting antique shops in town. Not one, not two, but almost a whole town was antique shops. This was fantastic for the antique shop people. I'm glad that they had it. And I'm glad for the people that own these buildings, that they were able to rent their property so they could pay their taxes and try to keep their property up. But as you well know, antique shops are not going to pay a high rent. So next thing we know, our property started going downhill. And we started looking like an old, tired town. And then we finally had some people with some ingenious ideas about, let's put some money into downtown. Let's do the streets. Let's go ahead and put some sidewalks in. There was bricks. Let's put some new lights up like the old time. Let's try to renew the downtown Tarpon Springs. And you know what? They did it. They went out there and they did it. They went ahead and put money into these buildings. They gave some money to these building owners to improve their properties. And yes, they did improve the properties. And now look at it. This downtown Tarpon Springs, I'm proud of now. When I was a kid growing up, I lived right downtown, so I ran uptown all the time. And so I know what Tar- Tarpon Springs used to look like, and now I'm glad to see where it's coming back. You people may not be happy that we got a problem down the other end of the street, but I'm going to address that too. But right now, I am want to see Tarpon Springs keep getting better and better. It's a walking town again. You got things downtown that we hadn't had in years. And I see people down there, the First Fridays, all these special programs, antique car shows, and I am proud of that fact. But, so at the west end of the prop, at the west end of the building of this land, we have a hotel, a dirty, slimy, dope hotel with some unethical people. We got three properties like that, and let's don't, let's don't just earmark on that one. There used to be four, but the Days Inn's gone. Thank God. But now, we got a problem that you think the only way we're going to solve it is throw money at it. You can't throw good money at their bad. It just doesn't work. These properties owner there, he's laughing. He's trying to steal from the ci- citizens of this town. And you sit there and think that you're going to sit there and say, okay, let's give him the money, let's get him out of town. And then we only have two properties to deal with. Well, I hate to tell you folks this, drug dealers, they don't just stop at one place or two place. They'll, they'll find another place to open up their little game. And next thing you know, you're going to have this problem all over again. We don't have enough money and we shouldn't spend our good money to go ahead and buy this piece of property, reward this man. Then you know, he's talking about the building. Okay, now you got to tear the building down. You got to clean it.
Sir, if you finish up, you're tied as a
I will, I will. It won't take me but a minute. You people want to spend money like a drunken sailors. And I know drunken sailors. I used to hang out at the British Cafe sometimes, and I saw the fishermen in the in the in the shrimpers come in. So at my time is what, what I'm going to say is one time Tarpon Springs did not have ten thousand dollars to put Springs did not have ten thousand dollars to put the fireworks on, and they had to cancel them. If it weren't for a citizen in Tarpon Springs who did not even have his business in Tarpon Springs, we wouldn't have had fireworks on one of the most patriotic days of our time. Yes, I'm against this, Sal. If you got a problem, put the chief on it, let him take care of it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, please do not do that. No clapping, please. Thank you.
Todd Eckhaus, um, eight-twenty, what is it?
God, where do you live, huh?
Uh, yeah, we moved. Eight-twenty Circle, Compass Circle, Tarpon Springs.
Here.
Pardon me?
You just moved there. That's.
I just moved there, right. And plus, I'm getting old, so. I agree with, uh, I congratulate Commissioner Banther and Carr. Uh, I haven't seen, I, I used, we used to live right on the corner there of Banana and, and South Springs, so we saw a lot of the activity that was going on with both of those properties. And I think it would be a, is a huge mistake to somehow try to equate money with lives, you know? And, um, the city has not been proactive. I mean, we've lived here for twelve years. I haven't seen that the city has really been proactive regarding this property in question tonight. And one thing, I don't know, we have to ask you now, but I mean, it's cost a lot of dollars for the police to, to do what they've done in the last year or, or two years with this. And so to say that, "Well, we're not going to spend an extra three hundred thousand or, or, or some number like that, uh, to buy this thing," uh, I think the city's not going to have any alternative. You know, if you don't do anything with it, it's going to continue to cost, and it's going to add up. The police are going to continue to be busy with it. And, uh, there, there's an opportunity now, I think, to make a real difference and to set a course that clearly shows that we have a commission that's proactive. And it's, it's, I'm just saying, it's a, I think it's a major, major mistake to equate dollars with hu- human assets. Um, and, uh, I would be in favor of purchasing this, this property. It's going to end up costing, whatever the difference is, it's going to end up costing that and more if you don't go forward with it. So I think the commission has to stand up and make it happen. Get rid of that property and, uh, just set a course. And I just haven't seen that occurring until this last year, basically, when the police have been involved and, and has been some discussion on it. But that's all there's been is discussion, you know? It's going to end up costing the city that extra amount and more if you don't do anything with it. It's easier to do nothing, I guess, than to, uh, than to take criticism from people who are, are, might be against it. But I think you have to stand up and make it happen and get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Kuskudis, six-two-three East Tarpon Avenue. Um, I, I wrote down some notes. In essence, I'm a strong believer in individual property rights. I don't believe the city should be going around buying problem properties. However, I'm here to speak in favor of the mediated settlement. Um, first and foremost, I need to disclose to you, well, first of all, God's been good to me and my family. I've been fortunate enough that I own four small office buildings. Recently, I actually owned the property adjacent to the motel. Yes, I knew what I was buying when I bought it. Um, and would I benefit if that settlement was approved? Yes, I would, so to be, to be fair. But I, I will tell you, right after I bought it, you know, it's, it's a building built in eighteen eighty-eight, and it's got a beautiful front porch. I sat out there one evening after I brought, bought it and just watched drug deal after drug deal. You know, um, it's, it's sort of, that, that's what I didn't expect. Okay? I knew there were problems with that hotel. I knew about the, the murder. I knew about the, but to sit there and openly watch drug deal after drug deal, I know the police patrol that area. They patrol that area specifically. They can't stop everything, okay? But, but the bottom line is, that place is a hazard. It is a health hazard, and you have to put dollars on what, what is a health hazard. Um, I know if some of you own businesses or lived next to this facility, you would be standing here hoping that the city would approve this settlement, because you sure don't want that living next to you or having an office building, an office next to you or motel, I'm sorry, having a motel next to you doing that type of, having that type of conduct committed. But that's not the only reason why I'm here, and that's not the only reason I'm in favor of this, this settlement. I think the Bay is probably the most picturesque place in Tarpon Springs, actually, if not in the Tampa Bay area. You know, I, I heard the commissioner talk about, you know, the things that he's seen down there. You know, the, the high school kids are always down there. The, 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 the bus comes down there, uh, just so people could see the beauty of, of Tarpon Springs. The weddings, uh, Ms. Marcus has a, a place where they have wed, she has weddings. She has a, a bed and breakfast there. Um, you know, the list can go on and on about how beautiful that gateway to the Bay Area is. Um, you do not want your tourists, as you're, you've decorated and landscaped the entrance into Tarpon Springs on nineteen. Okay? This is the gateway. This is the entrance to your Bay. This is part of your city. This is part of the most prettiest part of your city, and yet this type of, of monstrosity is there. If, if you don't resolve this, it'll never go away. Let's be realistic. The guy has a cash business, and there's no reason for him to sell it. It's a cash business. He'll, he'll do the Band-Aids that he has to do to keep that place open, but it's a cash business. The reason you probably didn't get a fair estimation of its value because it's a cash business. But I look at this as also, as an investment opportunity for the city. Okay? Besides what the dollars that, that, uh, are saved through, through lack of, uh, the police enforcement, having them focus their resources somewhere else. I actually, um, had a conversation with Mr. Hoffman, who is the property owner adjacent to that on the west end. And he had cho, he had had some plans. He said, you know, one day I would, I always hoped to had built something there. He showed me the plans. And I looked at his plans and says, "You know what? That's a really nice op, that's a really nice project. You know, if, if I got some people to look at something like that, would you be interested?" He said, "Yes." So I went around. I have, I have particular investors that I do work with, and, um, every one of them said to me, "You know what? I wouldn't touch that with a ten-foot pole because of that motel that's right there." Okay? I think there, there's an opportunity for investment. There's opportunity for development on the west end, but we have the, we have to have the foresight to know that, that there is business opportunity if, if the city does in fact buy this, buy this motel. I even thought of investing more money into my property if, if the case is.
Who does your town has.
I understand that. I understand that. Listen, I may not be an expert, uh, a property expert, but I've owned enough property. I represent many people who own quite a bit of property, and this property is a teardown. There is no economic viability of this property. You cannot fix it. You cannot sell it to somebody who would put money into it to get a, a decent financial return. Okay? This property needs to go. With regard to the property across the street, I will tell you, I, I would think that, that Karen Lemmons or somebody could reach out to like a Best Western. That would be an ideal location for a Best Western across the street. But why would a, a company like that look to invest or bring a hotel down to that end of the, of Tarpon when you have a, when you have a, a crack house across the street? It just won't happen. I appreciate your time, and again, I hope you consider voting in favor of this settlement.
Good evening. David Bolton, five-oh-eight North Gross Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Not really here to beat you up one way or the other as far as how you vote or whether you, we acquire this property or not. I just would like some thought put into it, like many of you have mentioned. I would like the full appraisal to be available online. The link that I found only had a four-page summary, so it does not show what properties is it on there. I couldn't find it, so I'll, I'll try again. What I saw only had four-page summary, so I couldn't tell if it included the property next door that sold for three hundred thousand. Um, it was also mentioned that the city might purchase the Hoffman lot, but if you set the value of Sun Bay at a million dollars, then what's the value of the Hoffman lot going to be with, uh, you know, a larger buildable lot with a view? So we have to think about what that might be in the future. Um, and then what will we sell it for once we own it? What's our return, as Commissioner mentioned, um, once we own it? Also, is there opportunity for more rounds of negotiation? Has there's been one full day of negotiations, and it was hard and heavy, I'm sure, but it sounds to me, um, like we sound like we're desperate, and that's not a healthy place to negotiate from, that there could be, um, some more money to put back on our side of the table. Um, can we, can continue to increase, um, the police and code enforcement to, to wear him down? Um, you know, it's been a concerted effort that I am aware of for the last year and a half, that we've really focused on this problem. So we've made a lot of gains in the last year and a half. Will it take a year and a half more to finally wear him down to where we can get a price that makes more sense? Um, and then also, it's been mentioned that we have three problem properties in this city, and we really don't. We're ignoring a much bigger problem which really affects, um, blight on our entire city. And that would be the chronic homeless that is a large problem for our city. Our city is a magnet. As other cities send us their chronic homeless, you see them getting off the bus in front of St. Timothy's, in front of the Catholic Church. They're giving them tokens in Clearwater and St. Pete and sending them up here saying Tarpon's got tons of places that'll feed you and house you, and so we're becoming a magnet for that. So it's a much bigger problem than just one property that I think the city needs to look at. And then the last thing is, is this business really a silver bullet that we're looking at saying, "This is going to clean up the whole city"? Um, I think we have a lot of issues that the city needs to look at, and it's a systemic problem that needs to really be looked at across the whole board, not just say all of our problems are wrapped up in one property. So, um, whatever you guys do, I'm going to support you one way or another. That's why we, you know, vote. But, um, I just hope that you guys will consider those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Toby, fourteen sixty-nine Vetner Avenue. I came, I started with printed comments, and then I started scratching a bunch of things, and now I'm down to, "What are you thinking? The numbers just don't add up." Way back in the seventies, we had a big blight with state mental health hospitals, and we got rid of those because we could take care of them locally. Locally, we still have those same problems that people have been dumped out. We have the homeless problem. Sun Bay, although it does have crime and everything else you're talking about, I would bet, what would you say, maybe forty percent of the city's drugs take place there. The other sixty percent are our responsibility. It's not, you can't just mow down one building, and it is an absolute teardown. The price that they're asking, there isn't an investor who's bought a property anywhere who would pay that amount of money for a teardown building. If the building's infested with lice and bedbugs and everything else, it, it's a, it's ridiculous. So you are paying for an empty lot. And the amount of money, when you go back to negotiations, you should think about that. We could spend that money in a lot of other places. When that building is closed, the crime doesn't stop. It simply moves. You need to address the real problem, and you need to let the chief do what he needs to do. Give the funds to him. The fifty-five thousand for the gentleman's attorney, I would rather spend on stuff in the city than to give to the attorneys for somebody who wants that much money. But I wish you well with your decision, but I, the numbers just don't add up, and the problem simply won't go away by taking the building.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Anita Protas, nine-oh-one Bay Shore Drive. Four years, four years I've waited for this night, and all of you know it. I've been up here time and again for what's been going on, the crime, the prostitution, the drugs on the Golden Crescent. The Golden Crescent, as I explained to Commissioner Ray, when she asked for support when she ran the first time, is the number one next to the Sponge Docks focal point of this community. It is the historic district of Tarpon Springs. You go into the Historical Society and see the pictures of Tarpon, what used to be there, how beautiful it is. We had it, and we didn't keep it up. Kept coming here because of the crime, the drugs. When you see a Christmas parade, you see Epiphany, and they're standing out front of that motel with a tray with needles and drugs, come on now. Is that what Tarpon Springs is all about? I've seen it. You go by there five, five fifteen, when I leave for work in the morning. The prostitutes? Yeah. You see them outside. This is not what we need downtown. This is not what we need in our main district, in our historical district of Tarpon Springs. We don't need it anyplace. You have your homes down there. There's families there. There's children there. This is a very dangerous situation. Crime, we don't want the crime, and we've got it from this place. Look what Dunedin has done. Safety Harbor, Clearwater, other communities around there paying money. Real estate is not going to go down. Real estate's going up. Read it in the papers on Friday, the real estate transactions in the paper. Business people want these funds also, but if your town has a bad reputation, your businesses aren't going to stay here. We are a religious community. We are a historic community. You have to spend money to have something. I'm very happy to hear the two commissioners who are in favor of this. Mayor, you're not going to get it any cheaper because that man knows and his attorney know that we want it, and they're going to stand firm. And if that's the case, you're going to have to go to condemnation. And we've done that with, uh, parking lots here in town, but businesses are using them, those parking lots for their commercial use. We see it every day, and we allow it to happen, and that's good because it's bringing money into town. But Tarpon is getting bad. It's getting run down, and we have to build it back up. You are responsible for the beauty, the historical, and the safety of this community. And for four years coming up here complaining, the chief knows it. It can't continue, and it's going to get worse. Are we going to lose somebody else in that motel? Are we going to lose somebody else in the street? I have a friend that lives in, um, Villa Pomosa, ten o'clock at night knocking on the door, a drugie wanting to borrow twenty bucks. Where's the safety for the people that live in those condos? Where's the safety for the residents and their homes? They're paying taxes. Let's step up. Let's get going, and let's surpass Dunedin, Safety Harbor, Clearwater, and make our community beautiful again and clean it up. Maybe this is going to be the start with the drug dealers in this town, cleaning them out and telling them we don't want them. And from there, we can go to across the street and further down Grand Boulevard. But our town is going down. It doesn't look good. Main Street doesn't look good. You go down the docks, they're not abiding by the ordinances down there. You know, when I see someone handing out a menu with a can of beer in their hand and a, and a halter top, that's not the beauty of Tarpon Springs. And I love the Sponge Docks. That's part of my life. I love Tarpon. I grew up here. We want our children to go down to the park. We want people to enjoy the park, but you can't do it anymore. Take the step, spend money. Other communities do, and let's get going on this and show that we mean business. Thank you.
Hello. Tommy Fray, six-two-four Penn Street. Um, I've tried to attend most of these meetings that have concerned this property. Um, you know, I did have a lot of concern with using eminent domain, so, um, like Commissioner Banther said, I'm thankful that we're not going that route. I think that would have been far more expensive. Um, but still, looking at this price tag, um, it's pretty outrageous. We're basically guaranteeing a golden parachute for somebody who has no care, uh, for our city. And I really think we're doing two golden parachutes, because I think we're, all we're doing is really going to be providing a lot of business for the hotel right across the street, which, if you look at the crime stats that the police have been providing every month and break it down, if you look at the Tarpon Inn, if you look at the Eureka Apartments, we're seeing pretty equal crime across. And I took the time to at least look up some of the people that were, uh, that were arrested during the recent, most recent roundup at Sun Bay. And I can't remember the exact ratio, but at least most of them lived in the city. So you're not eliminating anything when we get rid of this one motel. Now, if we had, if we had a plan for, for all of it, and I guess if we just had unlimited money and we could just buy, you know, all three properties and level them, I mean, maybe you can make a dent. Um, but you know, we're in the middle of a, of a drug crisis within the whole country. It's not as simple as a single property. And while, while I appreciate the optimism by some that this will help, um, I just have to disagree. And I think that the hope that, um, some are asking us to do for one-point-one million dollars plus and to basically hope that this makes a difference and that we're not back here in six months saying the same thing about the Tarpon Inn. in six months saying the same thing about the Tarpon Inn, which I took a chance to look up the Google reviews that you mentioned, Tarpon Inn is ninety-one compared to five, and they're all one star, and they were within the last week talking about bed bugs and lice, and you can look that up yourself, too. So, you know, I don't know, maybe the property owner has made progress, but I guess I can't really tell, because the crime stats are still showing the same as well for the last couple of months. So, you know, what real difference is one property making? Now, I understand, and believe me, I've grown up in the city as well, my, you know, since I was two years old, we moved here. And I live about a mile from the property up in downtown, so I would love for that property to be gone, I'd love for all of them to be gone. I'd love for that old hotel that used to sit there that burned down to still be there. However, that's not where we are right now. And instead of a knee-jerk reaction, which is what I feel like we've been doing this past year since the murder, you know, unfortunately, it takes time, and that's not a great answer, and it doesn't make everybody feel better all at once, but it does take time, and I think other options need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. David Ford, seven twenty Chesapeake. Lived pretty close to this hotel. My wife and I have walked past it many times in the dark. We never even knew it was there until we read about this in the newspaper. Now, I realize there is a lot of crime there from everything that's been said. We've walked by in the dark, we've walked by at five o'clock in the morning, we get up early, walk our dogs so that we can start our workday. I, I don't, but basically, I'm here to talk about the dollars and cents. It doesn't really make any sense to me to buy this property for the price it's being offered. I've spent forty-five years as an accountant, there's no numbers here that make sense. I like the Espirity Core in the city, it would be a better place without it. I'm a new resident here. I've only been here for a little over a year. And I was attracted to Tarpon Springs for a lot of various reasons. I came from Bucks County, Pennsylvania, virtually no crime. But I spent forty years living in the city of Philadelphia, familiar with crime. The crime affects all of us, but I'm not really sure if it is affecting us. It seems to be affecting specific individuals who can't control their need to have drugs or prostitution. That being said, it doesn't seem like the city in their CRA fund has any money to pay for this. On page four, the next one, it's looking to borrow money from the sewer fund. If you've ever been to our block at seminor, on Chesapeake, if there's a little bit of rain, we can't get off the street. It's flooded. We have, we have sewers that are, or storm drains that are backing up when the tides come in and flood our streets and our driveways and threaten our homes. If you're going to take money away from the sewer that, and could help us have a better community, I'm really against this. As some of the lady commissioners has said, or both of you, I'd like to see this go to a referendum. Let all of the people in the city have a say in this, and present the facts fairly. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marty Peters, seventeen oh two Heritage Oaks Court. I came here prepared for a fire-breathing speech, because I have been working with most of you folks up here for, oh, six years or so that I've been on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I thought you were losing your way with respect to fiscal responsibility. So, I was all set to challenge you on that, and I was very pleased to hear the comments of the commissioners and the mayor to start this out. And hopefully, all of the commissioners at some point will recognize the fiscal responsibility. But, let me try and just mention a few things that I think might be helpful. It seems to me that this process was somewhat flawed. We're kind of doing it with the cart before the horse. We're saying that we need to buy this property, and then we'll think about something we can do with it. Buy first, decide later is not a plan for success. It seems to me that we hired an economic development coordinator at one point for this very type of problem, and I'm not sure she's been given enough time to actually be able to concentrate on solving these type of problems, because she's been asked to go over and help out in all of these other areas for which she has done a tremendous job. But, let me suggest that the economic development coordinator could do a different process with this. She could have time to develop a plan to meet with developers, to meet with financiers, to investors. Give her three days a week where she has no responsibilities for the city, except to go out and eat dinner with people, and eat lunch with people, and discuss with them what types of things can be done with these properties. To work up a plan, an outline, but then a detailed plan as to what might be done, not with just this one property, but like some of you have been talking with, the three properties, or the whole Golden Crescent, so that we could have something there that's a plan, because right now, we don't have a plan. It was, let's buy this, and then we'll think what we're going to do with it. And I think then the economic development coordinator could bring it to the commission, modifications could be made, and then at least you would know what you were buying, instead of, maybe we'll figure it out later. Also, the costs should be estimated beforehand on all of these things. What's the cost for demolition? What's the cost of possible asbestos removal? What's the loss of revenue if the taxpaying hotel property is no longer on the tax rolls? What are the possible maintenance costs? And borrowing from one fund to another doesn't seem like sound economic fiscal policy to me. I would hope when you come back with a plan that would encompass everything, that you wouldn't be doing that type of thing in order to solve the problem. I also wanted to say that it seems to me that the goal is to stop crime, and I don't think that buildings cause crime, people cause crime. And all you're going to do is move it from one place to another. In fact, it might be better concentrated in one place, you can watch it a lot easier. I'm not sure that's a good place to have it, but it's going to be there, and you need to figure out a way that's really going to deal with it. So, those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. James John Spanolos, three fifteen Athens Street. I'm speaking in favor of the city taking this agreement. Mayor, you are correct, the owner is not an honorable person. We are, in a way, overpaying, but I believe the price of what we're overpaying, really, if the city goes back to negotiations, we need to go in with some leverage. What leverage do we have against the owner that we haven't already exercised? Almost everyone in this room agrees, this property needs to go. Our own appraisal, if we went forward with a eminent domain action, puts the property at about six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I believe. We're asked to pay about nine hundred and ten thousand, I believe. So, the difference, as you pointed out, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We just spent this evening almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars rewarding our employees for the work that they spent during the hurricane. The police chief can tell you how many hundreds of thousands of dollars we're spending just to supervise and patrol that property. So, we're paying more than our own appraisal said it's worth, we're paying less than his appraisal said it's worth. If we go to court and win, the best we're going to do is our own appraisal, plus the fees and costs that we've incurred since then. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an investment. The city is paying for that to make up for its neglect of this property for all of these years. Okay? This is the heart of Tarpon Springs, the most beautiful location. Every time there's a murder, we pay a cost for that. Every time we're in the newspaper with a big drug bust, we pay a cost for that. Okay? It's holding back the whole city. We'll make a park out of it, we'll make a parking lot out of it, but the place needs to go. And I would encourage the commissioners to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Here none. We now bring it back to the commission for more discussion. Just like to remind to my fellow commissioners that I recommend that we reject this agreement and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to make another reasonable offer, and not to use the eminent domain attorney, because we don't need to spend the extra money from the CRA fund. With that, any vice mayor, Banther?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank again everyone that came here to speak tonight, I'm sure at after nine o'clock at night, you have other things that you would wish you would be doing. Even if I see this differently than you do, I appreciate your involvement and coming here tonight. As far as the argument for dollars and cents, I think some very important things have been pointed out here. I mean, personally, my family has half a million dollars invested on our small portion of East Tarpon Avenue. So, I'm very familiar with return on investment, properties and rental prices and buildings and tear downs. That is not why I'm doing this tonight. I believe that this is not an investment just simply to get a return, but for the reasons that I mentioned before, we had the comments that we are rightfully using the CRA funds to invest on the west side of Tarpon Avenue. And I do believe that whatever difference we're paying versus what it's actually worth, which, as has been pointed out, it's hard to even know what it's worth, because it is a cash business. We will recoup debt, we will recoup down, down, down the road from the law enforcement, you know, all the expenses that we've had there, and not just that staff time as well. I know there's been some comments tonight by members of the board and the public that as if, you know, we kind of just decided last minute to do this and haven't done much work, but, you know, I believe the record shows that, you know, since we, well, really, I would say since, since the shooting, which I don't call that knee-jerk, I think that was the last straw that broke, that broke the camel's back, that we have been working privately with this individual for many, many hours, correct, Mark?
Yes.
This mediation was not our first go-around with this individual. He started in the multi-millions of dollars. So, this is not our first negotiation, we're just saying, yes, we're desperate, let's take this. We have worked tirelessly with him, and mediation as a last resort. It was also mentioned tonight that we shouldn't borrow from other funds to have this done. Well, we did it for the golf course, and look what we have to show. I'd argue that it's one of the nicest, you know, city-owned golf courses in Tampa Bay. That is a common practice in governmental accounting. And as far as what's next, you know, if tonight we don't go forward with this, I, you know, personally don't really see it moving forward at all. And we, like I said, have to be able to bear the responsibility of what happens there next. I believe we're sending a signal to the property owners and people nearby on the west side of Tarpon Avenue, right in the center of the bayou where the cross is thrown at Epiphany, that this is acceptable, because, I mean, we have done everything in our power with code enforcement, with police, with health inspections. You can call the DPBR every day if you want to. They'll come fix it up, they'll leave, it'll happen again. So, if we don't do this tonight, I think we have to decide what's next, and how are we going to solve this problem moving forward? Because I don't have any more, you know, ideas for staff. If you really look at what has been done over the past two years plus, you know, with this property, and again, we are sending a signal that this is acceptable on the west end of the docks for a difference of two hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, I've heard several people say it's a matter of two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. It's really a lot more than that. If we spend way over a million dollars, which is almost fifty percent more than the estimated price, we could be losing three-quarters of a million dollars. What could we be doing with that money? We could be hiring a police officer to be there every single day. We could, we could do a lot with three hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I feel like we can't just rush this. We need to think about this more, we need to continue the process we had started before we started this process with eminent domain attorney. It's costing us a lot of money. You talked about Commissioner Carr, the Google comments. If you Google Tarpon Inn and you look at TripAdvisor at Tarpon Inn, you will get the same kind of comments. So, I seriously do not believe that taking that building down will stop the crime there. I think an empty lot might attract more crime rather than a hotel. You don't know, we just don't know. And we're going to spend this kind of money, of our taxpayers' money, and us up here make this decision. I just don't feel very good about that. I don't feel that we should be spending a million dollars of our taxpayers' money without it going to referendum, or at least stopping here and thinking about this. So, again, I have to say that I would vote no on this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Kekka.
Thank you. I'll say this again, that I do not feel this is a good business decision for our community. And it's been said here by some others that, yeah, the crime's going to move from one place to another, it doesn't just go away, it's just going to move from one place to another. We've started a process, we've come down hard on the owner, the police department's doing a very good job with that, and I think they need to continue. I don't see that spending a million dollars on us making a parking lot is a good business I would agree, I would either, I would like to reject this offer, and I'd like to either see it go to referendum. I'm not sure how we would do that process, if we can make a motion or not. I would lean to the city attorney for that.
I appreciate that. As I know that Commissioner Seaver raised that issue earlier with her motion. Bear in mind that you have before you an agreement that was entered into on behalf of the CRA pending this board's approval. The property owner and the property owners' council is obviously aware that if you kick it back to the Board of Commissioners, which is legal to do, it is going to require a referendum vote, and it is going to, the earliest ballot that can make now is March of eighteen, March thirteenth, I think, of two thousand and eighteen. We have not raised that issue directly with the property owner, but I suspect strongly that kicking it to the Board of Commissioners will kill the deal, because you're going to need to have a settlement agreement amended to substitute the city of Tarpon Springs as the party in interest to the agreement versus the CRA. So, if you do that, if that's the collective will of the commission, the mediated settlement agreement will need to be amended, and if the property owner does not consent to that amendment, then the issue becomes moot.
So, we would have to vote on rejecting this offer first?
No, not necessarily. No, you could, and we'll get to that at the appropriate time, but Commissioner Seaver has made a motion to move the item to the Board of Commissioners. I just want to inform the board that that's the process that will occur if that motion receives a second and is voted on affirmatively.
Okay.
You move it to the BOC, you may never see it again, just as the Board of Commissioners is be aware of that.
But do we change the funding options of that? By doing that, because if you do, you just subtracted the five hundred thousand from the CRA?
Well, no, because you're not going to be spending the five hundred from the CRA if you move it back to the Board of Commissioners. The funding will need to...
You've got a whole different ball.
Right.
If you're going to do that, you need to, because now we're talking about a whole, you changed the entire, you changed everything.
Essentially, what you're voting on that, and it's legal to do, I'll make that clear, is that you're essentially reopening a negotiation with the owner to go back and write this agreement or a similar agreement with the Board of Commissioners, i.e. the city of Tarpon Springs versus the separate and distinct legal entity, the CRA.
Right. Well, regardless of the money comes from the CRA or the general fund, it's all taxpayers' money in my eyes, so it's coming from somewhere. So, like I said, I'll just, I'll leave it at that for now, but I would like to reject the offer that is on the table at this point.
The other thing I'd like to note before we begin to make motions and vote on them is this, and I know the mayor mentioned, there's been some discussion about the negotiated price, no issue with that. However, if you're going to send us back, and I don't want to step on market, but from a legal perspective, I heard mentioned to go back for a reasonable price. I'd like for you guys to let me... I I heard mentioned to go back for a reasonable price. I I I'd like for you guys to let me know what you think that price is, if that's the direction you're going to go into.
Did you do the nego- do all the negotiating or did, was there another, there was another attorney involved?
No, we had outside counsel present. Mark was present. Uh, they had two attorneys present.
With our other counsel.
You know, and I I'm probably stepping outside of my legal boundaries here, and if I am, please tell me to shut my trap and I'll happily do it.
Me, uh, Mr. Attorney, if we tell you the price that we want to offer, then then it's not a negotiation. Then you need perhaps we have, we we can have an executive meeting where
I I we, you have no basis for an executive session here. We we're not
For that. But if I, if we tell you how much money we're willing to pay, uh, that's not negotiations, is it? I mean, you just
It is a negotiation. It's just an open negotiation. It's, it doesn't give you a lot of leverage. I mean, I I can't, I don't dispute that portion of it. That's that's the function of uh, of working for government, right? You know, we don't get to do things in secret. We we spent, and and again, stepping outside the legal boundary for a second, I do a lot of mediation. Not all of them concern the acquisition of property, but some of them do. You've got here just simply competing appraisals. And I and I've heard it said several times tonight, and I certainly respect the opinions of those who've mentioned that we're paying more than it's worth, but the fact of the matter is that what it's worth i- is what a willing buyer is willing to pay a willing seller, being appraised by our relevant circumstances, right? That's what market value is. Now, our appraiser said 690, their appraiser said 1.4. I would suggest to you that at least between those numbers, the city has negotiated what what I think the city manager, I won't speak for him, but the city manager and I felt was a w- was a solid price, given the values. We didn't consider, at least I didn't consider in my consideration of the matter whether the owner was gaining a windfall. I don't know his personal financial situation, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't care if I did. It it's really just a function, a function of of value at that point. I've used our appraiser that we used, and unfortunately, he passed away back in July. But I've used him at trial on a number of occasions. He's one of the most highly regarded uh, appraisers in this area or was. Uh, but I can say the same of the appraiser that was utilized by the property owner as well. I know him well. I've deposed him. I've had, I've I've questioned him at trial. Um, a- and so between those numbers, uh, that that's how negotiation works. So if you're going to send us back, yeah, I I understand that it certainly hampers your negotiating position. Um, but we've negotiated a number and you you say go back, I'm sure it's less, right? But I don't know how much less. So I'm at a lot. So in the universe of motions that can be made, and I think first we would need to deal with Commissioner Seaver's motion to move the item to the Board of Commissioners, but I just wanted to make those comments relative to any motion that may follow or supplant or succeed. Commissioner Severs.
Thank you. So
Let me understand too, because you know, we talked about this way back to the difference between doing it with the BOC, the difference between doing it with the CRA. Obviously, the intent to buy this property, my intent, obviously I act on your direction. But the goal of paying this much money, you know, and I'm sorry to the people I'm going to offend that wants a park at the parking lot Parkland, but investing this kind of money is not the return. It would be my recommendation and Karen Lemon's economic development that we look and have a time period after this to find if there's, you know, the redevelopment, which is a true use of the re- to find the redevelopment because yeah, a park and parking lot will eliminate blight, but does it add anything to the CRA to build it? We like that. Now that we're talking about, again, all of a sudden, we've been throwing this curve of going back to the BOC. Don't we have to fall into BOC and designate a public use, whether it be parking, park? I don't think I don't think we can go to the BOC and go that we're going to redevelop and do a redevelopment deal. We we lose all the leverage of this of the CRA um, to try to go for the redevelopment of that, of combined with other property and stuff.
But we're not taking a buyout of the domain. We're just
Well, no, that'd be, that's in a domain perspective, domain, a an arms-length transaction. Um, e- even without a a future considered use for the purchase is fine, so long as it goes to referendum at this at this price. Th- those restrictions that you're talking about are rela- are concern um, the eminent domain proceeding.
What it need on the ballot language? I'm just, again, thinking of everything else, ballot language or stuff, we need to we need to say the, or just the plain purchase?
Yeah, the ballot language, I I I'm, as as a considerate, would be fairly simple. Do you wish to purchase this property for X dollars? Yea or nay?
Right.
Well,
Uh, ma'am, I just want to say
Commissioner, again, if we uh, given another opportunity to uh, city manager and to the attorney to do another um, negotiations, what what harm is that going to do if I say just 100, 200,000 dollars?
You know, I I I see it as he wanted 1.4, and we, you know, negotiated at at the amount that we did. I don't think he's going to come down. I I I don't think he's going to give us his property for less or sell us his property for less. So I I don't really think that uh, we're going to negotiate a better price. Uh, you know, he was wanting a lot more than what we negotiated, so
Not going to be
I I don't think he's going to come down. So I'm not sure spending more time or money uh, with attorneys to renegotiate is is going to uh, make a difference. I think we need to either end it and and step back and say, let's let's figure out what our next step is, or let our voters decide. The the those are what I think the options are for for me.
I I don't feel he'll negotiate. I mean, it it you know, months ago, he said he wasn't willing to sell. All of a sudden, he comes up with a price of 1.4 or 1.5 million, and now he, you know, he haggles on price a little bit, comes down a little bit. I don't think that he will negotiate. That's my personal opinion.
Well,
I don't think any of us were in the negotiations either, so, and we're not on his side, so we don't know what he is going to be at right now. The thing is, we've got a situation in front of us today as a CRA board, not the city commissioner or Board of Commission. The CRA board is tasked, based what the city attorney said, is to encourage redevelopment, get rid of blight. And that's what we're tasked with. If we're looking at sending us to the city commission board, the Board of Commissioners, that's not our responsibility. Yes, there's many responsibilities that are on that plate, and safety and other things fall on that. But at that point, to acquire this with city general funds is not the design of the general fund. It's the design of the CRA fund, and that's what we're using in this over a period of four years. Yes, we're borrowing funds, but we're paying it back over a period of four years. That's a very fast payback. Most houses that are purchased, we've got a 30-year mortgage. Most cars that are purchased, you've got a six-year payback period. This is a payback period over four years under the fund that was, that we have the money already within the city. So as the CRA board, we've got to look at this and really look at ourselves. This is what the CRA board is designed to do. This isn't a city Board of Commission decision that we need to do. This is what has been written in our ordinances and the laws of the state of Florida to address things like this. Yes, it's a hard decision. It's not fun to do. This is something that we don't dream about, like, oh, I can't wait to become city manager or city commissioner to have a controversial vote on spend a million dollars or not on a dangerous piece of property that affects many lives. That's not what I dream about when I was running for this, but I do know that it's a difficult, a difficult decision that I have to make because it's my job to do this and represent the many great people in this town. I really appreciate everyone coming out here and sharing. There's a lot of passion involved here. We've had ton of people reach out to us on both sides, for it and against it. But this is something we have to look at as a whole. Is this best for the City of Tarpon Springs? I would say, yes, this is what the CRA does. It's best for the City of Tarpon Springs to move forward with this.
I I could I say something, please?
Over here, I've not interrupted.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Carr. I can't say it better myself. And the notion of picking it back to to the BOC, I would say is irresponsible. As Commissioner Carr said, we are here as the CRA. We have only discussed funding from the CRA. We have never discussed funding from the general fund. If you're opposed to this tonight, just vote no, when I, when I will motion for approval. It's not going to, in fact, the only thing I agree with Commissioner Seaver on tonight, that she said perfectly, is that this is probably the best price we are 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 going to get. She knows what happened in the in the negotiations, both privately and leading up to this. I highly doubt it's going to get any better. We have no plan how how to handle this from the BOC perspective of 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 financing. I would also say that as a city commissioner, you should not push anything to referendum that that you don't personally support, support yourself. We don't pass on our job to the voters. Here as the CRA, we're looking at this application. We can vote it up or down, not pass it on to our other board, something that some of you don't support, and then say, we'll let the voters decide. No, they they elected us here, and the seats we're in tonight, we can decide up or down on this. So I I'm, I I am ready to motion for 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 approval when it's appropriate. Uh, Mr. Attorney, I know you said we have Commissioner Seaver's motion on 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 the on the table, correct, that we have to deal with first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, yes, and 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 we need a second, of course.
Repeat the motion again.
The motion was to have the BOC board uh, look at this item. But I I wanted to, you know, and and that doesn't, I it's only because I've gotten so many calls and so many uh, citizens who just think spending a million dollars of their taxpayers' money is 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 ridiculous. Um, and I understand what both of you are saying. Uh, but again, um, w- we have to think that we don't have a plan. The the CRA is for redevelopment. What are we planning? We're planning on buying a hotel and tearing it down and having an empty lot there. Uh, and then trying to sell that empty lot for, you know, you know, a fourth of what it's, what we paid for it. Uh, I just can't say that yes to something like that. Uh, I feel that, you know, that three quarter of a million dollars or so that we're going to lose could be used better ways. Um, and so again, I, if we don't go with my motion, I I'm going to vote no tonight on this.
Will I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have. Motion and a second roll call, please.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, please don't take this as harsh, but um, as city commissioners, we're not sitting as city commissioners right at this moment. We're sitting as CRA board. When we're city commissioners, we look at expenses and um, monetary amounts, money that are spent generally every meeting. If we're to get a new fire truck, it's going to be over a million dollars. Do we go to the residents and ask to vote on that? Um, our water plant improvements, there's multiple turbines that we've had to replace on our sewer systems. Do we go to them, ask them for approval for 800,000 dollars to replace those? So I think we have to ask ourselves during this time, are we going to send everything to vote when we're tasked as a board to vote on these decisions?
Can I just say one more thing? Because I'm, want to stay with the agreement and city attorney, you're telling me, we have obligation that this agreement is subject to CRA approval. To me, that means by the agreement we made is for them to prove yes or no. It, what does this do if we're throwing us, what does this do by what we signed and negotiate, and they're expecting an answer on?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I was just going to mention it. I think I I said it earlier. If you if you proceed down this path, the settlement agreement is going to need to be amended, right? You're going to need to substitute the Board of Commissioners for the CRA as the party to the agreement. That's going to require the property owner's consent, which he may or may not give. My 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 impression is that that consent will not be given. So if you choose to move it to the Board of Commissioners, now you have a special meeting uh, after this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to consider funding. That meeting is contingent upon, right, being approved a- a- at the CRA board. That meeting won't be happening tonight because you won't have an operative agreement to be working with. So if you go down this road to move it to the BOC, to the Board of Commissioners, uh, it's going to have to come back to you at a later date, probably your next meeting, but it may not come back to you at all. Because if the property owner doesn't consent to it, there is nothing to consider for you, for the BOC.
Okay, thank you. Well, before we vote on it, I'd like to comment that um, this is a CRA board, and we are responsible to act as a CRA board. Now, we are passing the buck to the um, Board of Commissioners by moving it open. I think one way or the other, we need to decide tonight. Either we're going to reject it and send Mr. LaCourance back for negotiations on rejecting completely or passing. That's the options we have.
So we could just make a motion then to reject it?
Yeah.
And forget the other motion?
There's a motion already on the board there.
Yeah, so you want to change your motion?
Track your motion.
So I would have to change my motion.
Okay.
Then I make a motion then to uh, approve?
Wait, 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 yeah. You've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Uh huh.
The motion maker wishes
Change it.
theoretically, anybody could amend the motion.
Uh huh.
All right? I I, it's, it sounds to me like you're substituting a new motion. Is that fair to say? I mean, you're just
You're amending your motion.
Make that, make that motion. You're going to, you're going to withdraw the original motion to move it to the BOC.
I, yes, I withdraw that motion to uh, to bring it to the BOC and make a motion to uh, say no tonight on this item.
So I want to receive that, uh, and the record should as a motion to reject the settlement agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes.
I'd like to modify this motion, and I want to turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor. Can I?
No, let's hear it. We'll see. Yeah, you can, you can do that.
I can do that, right? And what I like to say, I like to add into uh, reject the amendment, but also authorize the city manager, Mr. LaCourance, to go back with the city attorney to renegotiate. Do I have a second?
All right, that's fair. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
So the city attorney, so
You got the gavel.
Okay, so let me just reiterate that we are rejecting the, rejecting the motion tonight, rejecting the offer tonight or the settlement agreement, whatever. And then we're going to instruct the city manager and our city attorney to go back one last time to see if the property owner is willing to negotiate. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe on that?
Time frame? Sixty days? I don't know how long it does take, Mr. Attorney.
We might have an answer.
I don't know. Uh, this is kind of an uncharted territory here. I don't know how long it takes. I mean, it takes as long, I may call him tomorrow and say, let's renegotiate, and he may tell me to put it in my ear. So then I'll have you an answer in 24 hours. Um, I just, I don't, I don't know.
Um, so we could just put a timeframe on it.
You guys give me a time, you give me a drop dead period, and then we'll work with it then.
Okay, I I second that.
We have to remember how much money this will cost us for him to say no. Or spend more of our money to renegotiate. Um, I just want to put that out there.
Roll call?
Can I clarify something? Do we need to first vote on
To reject?
On Commissioner Seaver's amended motion?
No.
Okay, because we didn't have a second.
The motion belongs to the body. The body has amended the motion.
Okay.
We have a mo- an amended motion and a second, and we we are prepared for a roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
I'm sorry, I just need clarification on what a yes and no is in this situation. So if we have three yeses on this, um, it would be denied and then go back for negotiations, correct?
Yes.
If we have three nos to the denial, it would then come back up for a second motion? Am I correct in saying that? Okay. No.
We're ready for a roll call.
Are you clear what we're going to vote on?
Yeah.
Let's make sure.
I'm clear, yeah.
Yes, we are, okay.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
No.
Chair Lozis?
Yes.
Does that mean that the next item is obsolete?
Well, that concludes the agenda tonight, and we go to the staff comment.
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
City man, uh, city attorney?
No comments.
City manager. Madam City Clerk.
No comments.
Vice Mayor Panther?
No comment.
Commission Seaver?
Yes, the Merchants Association is sponsoring Oktoberfest uh, this weekend, and it's always a very popular event. Starts Friday night with the Black Hunkies playing at 8 o'clock, so I hope to see a lot of you out there.
Mr. Carr?
We've had many discussions tonight. Um, I I just want to encourage everyone, we live in a great town and a great city. Uh, we've got a lot of great small businesses throughout our town. People are watching online. They're here still. Uh, this coming weekend, still come out and support your small businesses, support the community, and let's stick together as a community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We should actually get it in?
I I have a quick thing. Um, I spoke with a representative from our hospital, and I know there was a lot of concern of why they were closed during the storm or the hurricane. of why they were closed during the storm, or the hurricane. And I was told, um, they were concerned about the structure. So they had a structural engineer, is Mr. Cooper, he's gone. Um, structural engineer came out and was, they were advised that, um, due to the severity of the hurricane that was on its way at that point, that they need to evacuate the, um, the hospital. So they were concerned about structure, so I don't know, somebody would like to look into that.
I certainly would like to see those documents.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Not so sure, I'll get them provided, but I'd be glad to ask, I'd like to see those documents.
So I thought I would just throw that out there, because I know we had a lot of, uh, citizens concerned on why our hospital was closed during the hurricane. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to welcome the new business to Tarpon Springs, Phoenix Medical Management Care Center, Home for Good Realty, Divas Outlet, Homefront Realty, Halas Gift Boutique, and Local Gardens by, uh, Margot Plant. Welcome to Tarpon Springs. Uh, also like, uh, everybody to know that the City Information Center is now open on Mondays and, and Tuesdays from ten AM to two PM at the Tarpon Springs Library. The telephone number is seven two seven nine three seven eleven ten, and the email is seniorinfo@CTSFL.us. Please tell everyone, and also my, um, thoughts and prayers are going to the victims and families of the treble shooting in Vegas. With that, thank you, and, well, that concludes the CRA meeting, but we do have another meeting scheduled.
Now we know.
I think so. I asked, I asked the mayor to call that to orders.
Yes, we do. And. I need to find that. I still have to open this meeting, and I'm calling to order the special session meeting on Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday.
If you adjourn the other meeting.
Adjourned.
Yeah, the CRA has been adjourned at? What time is it?
Nine forty.
Nine forty-three. And now we go into the special session meeting on Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs at nine forty-four, uh, October third, two thousand and seventeen. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Thank you. Well, we have no items for our consideration, so I'm closing the meeting. The meeting has been, um, that concludes the agenda, and it's adjourned at?
Is this city commission meeting? I apologize. I, I heard there was a question with regard to the hospital, I happened to be on the hallway, so I don't know if anybody had a, an issue.
I'll get you with it afterwards.
We'll get with you later.
I just want to see the report, that's all. That's an easy one.
It is, uh, well, let's, let's call it nine forty-four since we closed CRA at nine forty-three.
Okay, that concludes the special meeting at nine forty-four. And we already had the, uh, staff comments and the board comments, and good night, everyone. And it's adjourned.
Hey, thank you for coming out. Yeah.
No, it looks like you.
I don't know if there's.
No, no, she voted yes.
Oh.
She voted, there's three to two, three yes, two no. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it was, no, no, it was rejected to come back for negotiations. She voted yes, I have down yes. The first one.
Magic's getting off our people out there, getting hurt in the hurricane.
Nope, she didn't vote no to anything. She voted yes. Kikta voted yes. Yeah, I have yes. That's what, the attorney would have stopped us too.
Oh, okay, okay.
They voted to reject the settlement offer presented tonight, and for the city manager and city attorney to go back to negotiations.